Good morning, Chairman. Good person. Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to our third session of Budget Work Sessions. I'll turn it over to our Budget Director, John Hudson, to walk us through the agenda for today.
Thank you. Welcome. This is our final scheduled work session. At your next regularly scheduled meeting Tuesday, we intend to present a recommend budget with accompanying message. At the second meeting in May, we will hold, we will hold a public hearing on the budget. And then move to adoption at the first meeting in June. Today, we'll talk briefly about what you have in your packet. From there, we will move to fire districts and requested rate increases. We have six fire districts that have requested tax rate increases. Matt Evans from Finance will provide information on school capital. Budget Analyst Sam Riddle will provide education background and discuss the North Carolina School Forum Study. We'll take a break, and then we will hear from our education partners, beginning with AB Tech, followed by Buncombe County Schools and Asheville City Schools. Then we'll talk through budget changes since our last work session and our next steps. In your folder, you will find an updated list of general obligation projects and unassigned funds. There is a capital project list from the School Capital Commission you may reference during Matt's presentation. There is an education data comparison provided by NCACC survey, a survey for your review. There's also an analysis of the Public School Forum Study conducted by my office. This year's draft classification and compensation plan is included for your review. And we pass the classification compensation plan annually with the budget passage. There are presentations and related information from AB Tech and Asheville City Schools in your folder. We just received Buncombe County Schools' information. You have information from Health and Human Services regarding their supplemental home and community care block grant funding. You also have grant fund recommendations from the Health and Community Care Block Grant Funding Allocations Committee, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and the Isaac Coleman Grantees. Both the HCCBG allocations committee and the JCPC funds require board approval of those allocations annually. I'll give you a minute or two to review and see if you have any questions before we proceed.
I think, John, I guess just to give staff a heads up, I do want to talk at some point today about, we're just going to update on the federal CDL loan program, the state post-holene revenue loan program, and then maybe mention briefly the hypothetical future potentially past General Assembly Revenue Replacement Grant Program or whatever. I don't even know what I'm supposed to call it. I see nods. People know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we can talk a little bit about that. We've looked at that, and there's still questions.
Yeah.
And with that, also then the, I know, the 2 million equalization, that was also potentially working its way through legislation?
Yes, I haven't seen it yet. Any other questions? So we'll move, go ahead and move to fire districts. Six districts are requesting tax rate increases, with the remainder of departments preferring to remain at the same rate. Here are the tax rates for the current year and the requested rate for fiscal year '26. These six districts are here today to speak to you about their requests. I will be, I will ask Enka Kandler to join us first. Enka Kandler is requesting an increase of 1.5 cents per $100 of assessed value. This will result in additional revenue of $488,110. Chief Beddingfield is here today to speak to your, to their request or answer any questions.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to have a little bit of your time. Glad to go over, I've had, gotten a packet. It should have one in front of you like this. You can follow along with me if you will. You'll go to, actually, the first couple pages are introductory pages. Tell you a little bit, the third page, tell you a little bit about our demographics. Currently, we are, have 47 full-time positions. That's 45 operational shift employees and two administrators, as well as an additional seven volunteers. For FY '25-'26, our intention is to add another three operational personnel and one office assistant. Those three other operational personnel would be one firefighter per shift, which is, will conclude a three-year plan that we've had in place to place another engine in service at our newest fire station, Fire Station 3, where our ladder is currently stationed. So, of course, we want to continue to provide advance and, and just the best fire service delivery we can to our customers. Our call volume in 2024 was 3,782. That's, and it continues to go up. We've got some growth in the area with apartment buildings and those kinds of things. And just to give you an example, our average for the last three years was around 3,600. So, we're, we're continually seeing additional needs in our district. We cover a 40-mile square, square mile district divided into three sub-districts. It consists of residential, commercial, government, medical, wildland, and rural response areas. And we provide mutual aid to, and auto aid to all of our neighboring fire districts, as well as to the entire county and neighboring counties. Currently, according to the last census, most serving number approximately 28,000 people. And I estimate that's probably around 30,000 to date, maybe a little bit more. Our request is to increase our tax rate from 12 cents to 13 and a half. The majority of this area increase is for personnel benefits and for recruitment and retention purposes, as well as the three additional firefighters and one office assistant. And by the way, I must mention that after having discussions with county leadership, we originally intended to add those three firefighters as was planned on July, but we have delayed that until January in order to get our, to reduce the tax rate that we were originally asking for. In addition to the other programs, ECR is in the following year, as I mentioned, a three-year plan to put an operational engine in service. This includes the last three hirings of one person per shift to give us a total of 50 firefighters. District 3 is possibly becoming our hotspot, if you will, regarding our responses. That's where the majority of our residential and multifamily growth is. We've got a new, several apartment complexes have recently been completed, and they're, they're all 98, 99% full capacity. We also have several that are in construction phases right now that I would anticipate will also make that capacities in the future. This requested increase is going to allow for several things as far as employee benefits. First, it's going to allow for a 3% cost of living raise for all our employees. It's going to provide for an enhanced and updated employee longevity program. Currently, our program, and it's been in place for probably 20 years, is, is, we feel insufficient for recognizing our longevity. It's going to provide for overtime opportunities and maintain an increased manning level on a daily basis for our personnel. This is going to increase firefighter safety by putting more boots on the ground, having more people on shift, and it's going to be in compliance with NFPA 1710 and 1720 for structural interior firefighting operations. Thus, it'll produce, it'll increase our service deliverability. This is also going to provide for employee family insurance cost relief assistance. Currently, our employees who have added family members or children to their policies are paying an, and an enhanced amount of premiums per month. What we want to do is to allow our firefighters, provide them an allotment of $250 per month to assist in that measure. For example, family for the upcoming year is approximately $1,300 a month for a firefighter. And we provide insurance for the employees, but we, we have not provided for any family or employee plus one. So, this is an opportunity for us to help offset at least what the cost was from last year, and it's going up about $250 a month approximately from last year's fees. It'll also provide opportunity for our employees who are seeking higher education to have an opportunity for us to pay for some of their education. Currently, on our career ladder, we, we, we assist employees if they're at the captain's rank, because that's where we require the additional higher education. But this will, we've allotted $5,000 to assist employees for, that are, have not yet achieved that rank, and so they could still help with their higher education. So, the next page is a breakdown of our, our budget. And like any other business, employee benefits and salaries are the biggest expense. That said, we want to be able to keep our, our employees, and we want to be able to recruit employees whenever the openings occur. Just to give you an example, last year, we had three openings, and we had a total of two applicants, which is, is, it's really horrible whenever you think about it in that respect. There's a lot of competition out there among all the fire departments and, and in the western part of the state, and in fact, the whole state. So, we want to be able to, to provide an attractive package for our new recruits, provide an attractive package to keep our current employees for retention purposes. And that, that's the majority of, again, the cost of our increase, with the exception of the three new employees. So, currently on our benefit incentive programs, we, our starting pay is $1,606 for a firefighter that's risking our life for you and me every day. So, as I mentioned a minute ago, this will allow overtime for firefighters on a daily basis, so we can keep a full staff as much as we possibly can on duty to better provide services to you and our community, as well as the safety of our firefighters. I mentioned a employee longevity recognition a little while ago. Our current range is $150 for an employee that's been there one year, and goes up to $750 for an employee that's been there for 25 years. We want to change that. We want to recognize employees to $100 per year of their service. We're currently paying for employee health, dental, and vision insurance, as well as long-term, short-term disability, workers' comp, and accidental, and just accident and death insurance, as well as a cancer policy. We want to assist with the extensive employee family coverage to $250 a month. I believe that would greatly enhance not only our recruitment, but our retention as well. And again, the, the family and family or employee plus one premiums are extremely expensive. In addition to the benefits I just currently mentioned, we also reimburse an employee $500 once per year, once they have met a $1,000 deductible. We want to, again, assist employees with higher education for those who are not required to have it. And we match currently 6% of a employee 401K contribution. And lastly, we are in year five, are providing a supplemental retirement for our employees, which we're contributing a 12% amount to each employee in hopes at some point of being able to transfer that into the local government retirement system. In addition to those benefits and for retention and recruitment, we want to be able to purchase some new wildland gear this year. I've allotted in our budget $15,000 line item for that purpose. We also want to replace some aging structural firefighting gear. Our firefighting gear has a shelf life of 10 years, whether it's used or not. And of course, ours, we're, we're kind of busy, so ours gets used a lot. So, the 10-year shelf life is, is really not relevant to us. However, if the gear was purchased today and placed in stock, which, which some fire departments do, I would imagine, 10 years from today, if that gear was still sitting on that shelf, even if it hadn't been used, it'd be outdated. It'd have to be replaced by NFPA standards. So, again, that's not the case with us, but we do have gear that is recurring for replacement. Looking forward, we currently have two rescue trucks. One is a 2000 model, year model, and the other one is a 1996 year model. They both serve individual purposes. At some point in the future, we'll want to replace both of those trucks with a single unit that will perform both of the tasks that these separate trucks do. Also, I mentioned a while ago that we were going to put a pumper in service at Station 3. This is part of the last year of a three-year plant. That engine is a 2010 engine. Currently, if we were to order a new engine today, that new engine would be three and a half to four years out before delivery. So, we would like to replace that engine. We want to get that on order. So, I'm anticipating having three to four years of service out of the one we currently have, and then being able to put that one in reserve with a new engine. Just for your knowledge, we did order a new engine for a sister truck to the one that we're going to put in service, another 2010 engine. And that engine was ordered in 2023 February with expected delivery date of September to October 2026. So, that gives you a kind of a timeline of how long it takes to get one. It's 1,110 business days, to be exact, and at a cost of just shy of a million dollars. So, they're not getting any cheaper. They're not getting produced any quicker. The one, the ones that we currently have in service, and what I'm planning on putting in service, are not getting any younger. So, they're, they've got to be replaced. In addition, and we've been working on this project for the last several years, our SCBA's that we currently have, our self-contained breathing apparatus, are 2010 models. Over the last few years, we've replaced all of these cylinder bottles, and we've replaced all of the air masks. And there's one other component to that, and that is the frames that actually hold the cylinders. They, again, are 2010 models, and they come at a price of $8,200 apiece. And when you add that up to 45 packs, then that comes up to, to a fairly large expense. But that is the third component of our self-contained breathing apparatus that we need to replace in the near future. Lastly, the current Fire Station 1 that we're in is a 30-plus-year-old building. And as we, we basically outgrown it, and that is another reason why we're looking to replace the rescue trucks. We have a place to put some additional equipment. We would hope to be able to acquire some land at some point in the future and be able to replace that fire station at another location that is more acceptable to our responses in our district demographics. That's what I have for you. There are some extra tabs in this packet to include our budget breakdown, where the board has approved it, our capital CPI, and our operating plans, and some information that I've provided to the county. And I'd be glad to take any questions if you have.
Are there any questions for Chief Beddingfield?
I'll just say thank you, Chief Beddingfield, for everything that you all do for our community, and thanks for all these really helpful details as well.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief Beddingfield. We appreciate you being here.
French Broad is up next. I'm going to ask Chief Shelton to join us. There is a slight change to the, to the information I sent yesterday. And so, since I sent out your information yesterday, French Broad has reduced their request from one cent to a half cent. This generates an additional $21,247.
Good morning. Like you said, we, we first come in at one penny. After talking to Finance and the county manager, we just decided to go down to a half a cent. The whole, the whole purpose of this is to keep our, what we're losing on sales tax. We're under contract of re-model on our station. That's, that's the reason behind it.
Basically, with the remodel of the building and trying to remain revenue neutral while we take that, that on, we've, obviously worked hard with the cost to keep those down, manage those well, but to have the station remodeled and re-updated while trying to remain just revenue neutral during this time period.
So, this reduction doesn't impact staffing and salaries?
No.
Each has quota.
Thank you, Chief Shelton.
That's all I've got.
Thank you.
We appreciate you all. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Chief Penland is here with Swananoa today. Swananoa is requesting a one cent increase that would generate additional $132,715. Swananoa is projected to see loss of property tax base from the storm. Chief Penland is here today for questions.
Madam Chair, County Commissioners, thank you so much. This opportunity to be before you, and on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Swananoa Fire Department, I'm here to request that you approve our FY '26 budget. I want to go back to FY '25. The Swananoa Fire Department had not added full-time staffing for probably about 20-some years. So, in FY '25, we decided that we would add one firefighter per shift. In doing that, when we looked at our projected revenues in FY '25, we knew that we were going to have expenses over on revenues. So, we decided that we would use our fund balance to try to get us to reevaluation. And then we all saw what happened in September. I want to say thank you for putting that reevaluation on hold. But, as been mentioned, the Swananoa Fire Department is down from their ad valorem value that is projected currently right now, 3.7%. That's a loss of close to about $100,000. Then you take into consideration that in FY '25, our formula that figured the amount of sales tax we got was reduced as well. So therefore, we lost sales tax in FY '25. So then, we get to FY '26. Again, we look at not adding staff. We were going to try to add staff if the reevaluation came through, so we're going to put that on hold. We are going to give a raise to our current staff to try to make sure that we stay competitive. Very interesting to see what where we're at when that salary study does finally come out. So not adding staff, we are not, we we we've cut where we could. And when you look at our expenses over revenues, then we were going to be nearly four hundred thousand dollars. So this penny increase that we're requesting wasn't, won't take us to the four hundred thousand. But what we are asking is that we're going to still use some of our current fund balance to get us hopefully maybe to next F Y twenty seven to see where reevaluation lands, to see what our needs would be at that time. I will tell you, our future needs right now is that we have a fire engine that is twenty three years old. It'll be twenty be twenty four, twenty five years old. In F Y twenty seven, we have a ladder truck that is will reach its twenty year mark about that time. Current prices right now in our C I P program to replace those two trucks is about three point two million dollars. What we're going to try to do in F Y twenty six is go ahead and pay one of the trucks that we do have currently financed. We're going to try to get it paid off. And then hopefully in F Y twenty six, twenty seven, see where we might land and try to go and get another one before we enter into any more debt services for those two new addition apparatus. We just just hired our, we had those positions and we just, they, one of them started today, one's going to start tomorrow, and one will start on Sunday. Ideally, as you can see in what we've already been through in the county when it comes to the wildfires, we need to try to make sure we maintain our current staffing, and then hopefully we can add as as needed. I'm just afraid that next fall, we're going to be in some trouble here as this timber lays there and dries out over the summer. So so we're, our our request is pretty much that we, we're down about five percent when you look at our ad valorem value that got reduced, and you look at our sales tax that got reduced. But I also want to caution you that when I look at the tax records for our community down through Swananoa, you have some of the land valued, but those owners are going to probably more likely appeal that because the value for it to just be a hole in the in the middle of the, up against the Swananoa River, they're they're probably going to say, look, I'm not going to, we're going to peel that value as well. So what we're looking at in projections may even further be reduced once those appeals come in. And I am happy to ask, answer any questions.
I'll just say thank you, Chief Penland, and I know you take this very seriously when you're weighing all this. And I also want to say thanks for the fire wise that I saw that your fire department's already doing and getting out in the community and helping community members understand how to protect their homes. So thank you for that good work and being proactive with it.
You're very welcome. I'm not sure exactly the number, but I think there's like two pages of homeowners that have already called in and asked us to come do an assessment around their home.
Oh, wonderful.
As a reminder, Chief Penland spoke to a compensation study. The county has sponsored a compensation study for for firefighters, fire departments, and we expect the results of that, I believe, this summer.
That was one of the questions I had. Chief Penland, thank you. I know this has been a particularly challenging time for you and and your firefighters in Swananoa. We appreciate your work. I do have a quick question for you. How much of your fund balance do you anticipate using? How much of your fund balance do you anticipate using?
We will lose, it'd be close to two hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yes. And and what we did in order to keep with our current agreement with the county, the service agreement, we've actually lowered the percentage of that amount that we hold so that we can actually pull that money over. Still, we still will have meet that that requirement, but barely. And our capital, we have a project going on that the county has helped fund some. It's called Fire Station Alerting. So on our capital side, we are reducing that just a little bit because our main station is was built nineteen seventy six. So we need to upgrade some things to make sure that that Fire Station Alerting system works properly in our main station.
Thank you. Are there further questions?
Chief Penland, I just want to thank you for all your work. It's really hectic six months for y'all, I know, with the after the storm, the mulch fire, and it just keeps on coming. I know there's a significant number of properties, well, a number of properties in Swananoa that have applied for the FEMA buyout program, Hazard Negation Buyout. I know that'll impact your your tax base. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all or?
Well, that's good. That's another thing. When that when that FEMA buyout program comes and it's going to, that probably will be owned by the county or the state, then that's going to take away that revenue as well. I I would hope that we could find some way down U S seventy, those business owners that are, that they were thriving businesses before the storm hit.
Yes, sir.
And and no fault of theirs, they are now out of business. So my concern, my hope would be that we find a way that we can use the current floodplain regulations and the current codes and figure out how we could maybe put those businesses back. I'm afraid that you're looking at that, if you're looking on the the north side of U S seventy, all those businesses more than likely will not be able to come back only because they sit too close to the river. So hopefully, we can figure out a way to 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 bring those those back. I'm all about looking for green spaces and sidewalks. I I support that. But what happens is is something happens on the green space, there is no revenue generated. But usually, you'll have an expense to the fire, police, and E M S. You just have to go down and get someone who's maybe fallen or something like that. So I really would hope that we can bring back. And I hear about let's build build back Swananoa, it's going to be stronger. But if our current codes and regulations don't allow us to do that, it's really just us hoping. So I hope that we can work something out, that we can figure out. I'm not asking to be unsafe by no means, but I really think we got to figure out a way to to get those businesses back where they were at.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Penland. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Upper Hominy Chief Prestwood is here today. Upper Hominy is requesting one point six cent increase that will generate an additional ninety five thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars.
Morning Commissioners. For y'all that don't know me, my name is Shane Prestwood, and I represent the Upper Hominy area of Moncom County. So just to give you a little background of what, why we're looking at this increase. So we are the furthest southwest corner of Moncom County. Unlike some of the other more developed areas of the county, we have not had the growth to keep up with emergency services. So our tax base has not increased to keep up with the with the services that we need. In doing that, we've also had some capital purchases that we've had to do that were unscheduled. We've had just in the last two years, sixty five thousand one hundred, whether that be in truck repairs. We had a twenty thousand dollar water heater, et cetera, that had to go out in our station. So we had to go into reserves for the past two years for that. Our initial plan was to go reevaluation and be able to make those up because our fund balance is lower than the fifteen percent to match Moncom County that the Board of Directors would like to see. Unfortunately, that being said, with Helene and having to move to reevaluation, which I agree with Chief Penland, that's absolutely the correct thing to do, we have to come and look at that increase. Our increase is going strictly into, we've got a small line item for reserves. We are going into, our biggest thing would be staffing. So if we stay at our current rate, we will actually have to reduce our staffing. So we would not have enough to keep what our current staffing level is. At our main station, we have two full-time personnel. At our substation, we have two full-time personnel, and we have one part-time person twenty four hours a day at our main station. We would have to reduce that part-time to a twelve-hour position. The one point six also allows us just to do a small twenty five cent increase for hourly employees only. Other than that, that's pretty much what we're going into as far as looking at our increase. We are a very isolated portion of Moncom County. Inky Canler is right next to us. And it's pretty much one way in, one way out. We've got PIS National Force around us and State Parks, which is great, but that does not, that doesn't generate tax revenues. So that's why we've come in the past and and looked at these increases and why when with meeting with PIS Pender, that's something we want to do at reevaluation is sit down and say, okay, for the next five years, what type of growth are we looking for? Is there going to be infrastructure coming to Hominy Valley that will cause growth? If not, then we can stay at whatever our our rate is. And that's something we have looked at in our C I P. In F Y twenty four, we also ordered apparatus that will be delivered F Y twenty eight at a cost of one point one million dollars. So other than that, our staffing, that's that's going to be our biggest thing. That and keeping our fund balance where we need for operations. So other than that, that's about all I've got. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Sir. Wes Moncom, Chief Fagnant is here to join us today. They're requesting a one and a half cent increase to generate additional three hundred four thousand eight hundred forty three dollars.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here today. We are requesting that one and a half penny. As you can see, five years ago, we endeavored upon the reevaluation timeframe. And it it is regretful. I was unable to make it that one more year to the sixth year to to align with reevaluation. I'll echo my fellow colleagues. I think it was the absolute right decision for our community to put that reevaluation off, and I applaud you for making that difficult decision. Wes Moncom is operating in a deficit, however, for the last three years. In twenty twenty three, we, to the tune of ninety five thousand seven hundred six dollars. And twenty four, we're forty four thousand nine forty. And this year, even with this request, I'll be twelve thousand five hundred twenty in in the red. So what we're attempting to do with this is sustain services. During, after Helene, I was forced to eliminate six part-time positions. Those positions are still not filled and will not be filled with this request. A hundred and eighty four thousand seven hundred forty eight dollars of this request is personnel, just keeping pay. And then, of course, as you're aware and also dealing with the state retirement increase premium. And then the next largest, eighty eight thousand, is going into just operating the fire department. As you know, five years ago, I could have never imagined what our economy would look like and how much things would cost. So that, and then just small amounts into maintaining our facilities, eleven thousand for station one, fourteen thousand. And again, that's just to keep the lights on. It's it's no renovations, no no extra projects. We have zero dollars going into any capital improvements. What I'm hoping to do is hold the ship upright this year. And then at reevaluation time, we do have future goals. We will be looking on station three, which is in the newfound area. Would look to add an engine there, but that's going to go through the next five-year period. So we'll we'll build that and we'll take small incremental steps through the next five years to slowly add that, add that station so I can, as some of our other chiefs had already mentioned, do some of those capital improvement projects such as turnout gear and S C B As. So just to summarize, this increase is for our people. It's it's taking care of the fire department and then trying to catch up to the economy. Happy to answer any questions.
Chief, I just wanted to ask, clarify real fast. You said six positions were eliminated. Was that, is that due to staff turnover or do post-Helene budget situation?
Post-Helene budget.
Okay, okay.
And obviously, that's having an impact. And I know that we've had several fires in, or some fires in your district lately. So you all have really been having to address a lot of challenges. And so are you, you're feeling like, I mean, I know you don't want to, but you feel like you'll be able to get through with the, even with the loss of those six part-time?
Of course, it makes it more difficult. That's, you know, obviously, two, two, two folks per shift that we no longer have there. As Chief Penland eloquently said, we were going to be in a difficult situation with the the blowdown. And so not, in addition to that, the current wildfire situation that we're seeing is starting to mimic what we see out west. So what you see on T V in California, that type of fire is beginning to show in western North Carolina. Not to be on any global warming, I don't know. All I do know is fire is changing. And so the size, the intensity, the resources required to combat those fires are only going to get more more expensive. And of course, in our area, outside of Upper Hominy areas, we have housing and we have communities that live in our mountains. So yes, there's going to be, there's going to be an impact in in future years. I I unfortunately believe you're going to see our, the fire departments needing the manpower to answer those type of situations. I never thought I would see a D C ten drop a fire retardant in West Moncom.
Well, well, thank you so much. I know the community very much appreciates everything you all are doing to keep them safe.
Thanks, Chief Fagnant.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Reynolds with Chief Carter and Board Member Jay Lee are here. They're requesting a one point eight seven cent increase to generate a hundred ninety thousand two hundred twenty one dollars.
Good morning. Thank y'all for having us. So we're looking at a one point eight something, I think, increase on our taxes. In twenty twenty two, we went revenue, or we said revenue neutral, went revenue neutral. We're able to sustain until inflation hits. We're trying to remodel our kitchen now, because our building is thirty two years old. And we're and we're also trying to remodel upstairs. The other, having the cost of construction, especially commercial construction, is, I didn't dream that it could be over three hundred something dollars a square foot. Learned that, so that's where we're at with the building. The able to sustain from the twenty twenty two up to this budget year through our fund balance. We dipped into it to help with the sales tax that was less. So the increase that we're asking would help with the personnel. My blank, personnel.
Insurance.
You want?
Personnel with insurance.
Yeah, the insurance going up and also for for a raise. There we go. Pretty simple, cut and dry. I think we're, our budget is not very fat nor it is put together. Jay does a very fine job for us. I've always asked him to to keep me out of the front page of the newspaper and also for W L O S. He's done a very fine job. I'll stay in my lane, he stays in his lane. We're happy. We're also, our new truck should be here around Easter, August of twenty twenty six. It's been on order now for, I think, three years or something like that, so it's trying times. You don't have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Can you tell us a little bit about that line, maintain substantial fund balance? What percentage does this allow you to maintain above and beyond the fifteen percent?
We're at eight point five above. We believe we'll be at twenty three point five for the fifteen. We're we're expecting to take a two hundred fifty nine thousand dollar hit on the fund balance this year because we did an increase last year.
Missed my taste.
Did you get the microphone?
Say that one more time into the mic, please. Thank you.
Our deficit for the twenty four, twenty five year that we're in currently is expected to be two hundred fifty nine thousand. Depreciation's a hundred and seventy five roughly of that. So cash, we're looking at about an eighty five thousand dollar hit to our fund balance. We do have a reserve of about twenty three point five if that occurs. And we have planned expenditures, as he said, for the kitchen and for the upstairs. The upstairs is sleeping area is for our fireman and the E M S station there. And then we also have a plan, we'd hope to have some money out of the fund balance to help on the fire truck when it arrives a year from now. But that is not looking good at this moment if we keep the twenty three point five percent. If we go down, that's where we'll have to take it.
Are there any further questions?
And ninety ninety thousand of the hundred and ninety is all personnel. And we had added the one person per shift that someone else spoke of earlier. And we had added the one person per shift that someone else spoke of earlier last year with that increase. And so we're just maintaining.
Are there any further questions? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you, folks. Do we have any questions on fire district tax rates? We see recommendations with the recommended budget. And these changes in tax rates will be passed with the annual budget limits. We're going to pivot to school capital. I'm going to invite Matt Evans from our finance team up to talk to us.
Still good morning, Commissioners. The School Capital Fund Commission is an advisory body made up of five members who make recommendations to the, to you all relating to school capital projects. Its five members include representation from both school systems and our Board of Commissioners. And then they elect one at-large member. The original legislation establishing the commission dates back to nineteen eighty-three, but the commission went through significant changes resulting from legislation in 2016. The major change in the 2016 legislation was to recommend projects based on priority of needs as opposed to average daily membership. Funding is made available through the legislation of one-half Article Thirty-nine sales tax. In per contact, sales tax revenues yield roughly twenty-seven to twenty-eight million dollars annually. For the process, school systems are asked to submit prioritized projects for each annual funding cycle based on the following criteria. Projects be greater than a hundred thousand dollars. Projects correct safety and health concerns. Projects comply with legal requirements. They maintain the lowest lifecycle cost. And they improve the educational environment. This slide shows a five-year funding history for the School Capital Fund Commission. The School Capital Fund Commission is accounted for in its own fund, so its own county fund, which maintains its own fund balance. Spikes in fund balance are attributed to the way that we record bond proceeds used to pay for projects that are awarded. The fund balance will decrease as project spending occurs. So in the last, in three of the last five years, a hundred percent of top priority requests were recommended by the School Capital Fund Commission and ultimately approved by the Board of Commissioners. During the FY 2025 cycle, so the cycle that happened last year for this year, we discussed the need to reduce the reliance on debt to achieve more commission dollars to be spent on actual projects as opposed to interest. The commission met this past Monday to determine which projects to recommend to you all for FY 26. That meeting resulted in two recommended projects for Asheville City Schools and fifteen projects for Buncombe County Schools. The recommended projects amount to right under eleven million dollars. And we intend to use cash, not debt, to pay for these projects. The handout in your packet includes a list of existing projects related to the School Capital Fund Commission. There are ninety-one existing projects showing on Buncombe County, so our general ledger. Seventeen are associated with Asheville City Schools and seventy-four are associated with Buncombe County Schools. The projects are at various levels of completion and the handout notes which projects are certified, complete by the respective school system. In the future, budget staff will come to you with a project ordinance to close those, close those projects off the books. You have any questions?
And Matt, when will we be bringing to the full commission the recommendations that we made on the current year's school capital?
So as you may remember, a few years ago, the, we were off-cycle with the School Capital Commission. And we would see these recommendations brought with a separate budget amendment sometime January, February. We've now aligned that with the budget ordinance. So the commission will approve those, approve recommendations as they see fit when we pass the, adopt the budget ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
And the closures that Matt spoke to are on Tuesday night's agenda.
And so just to clarify, they'll be in the recommended budget and then that'll be part of our discussion with, is that, you were asking, Parker?
Yes, the first, the first meeting in June. It'll be, okay, great.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt?
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
So we're going to pivot to education discussion. Sam Riddle is here.
Good to be with you again, Commissioners. You may recall from last week, our basic statutory references that the state will cover instructional expenses while counties cover facilities. It goes on to create that local current expense fund to cover all current operating costs within the financial resources of the county commission. Here again, the specific items to be covered by counties. And Buncombe County has funded these requirements and gone beyond that. You may recall this chart as well, but I've made a slight change to veteran campus major, major dedicated revenues funds to K-12 schools. That changes the Article Thirty-nine School Capital Fund Commission, which now shows actual revenues, or in the case of fiscal year twenty-five, projected revenues rather than debt service. This emphasizes that funds are still dedicated to K-12, even though not all funds are necessarily deployed. And as you can see, for fiscal twenty-five, it's still around that one hundred sixty billion mark. In your packet is another reference that includes the details of this slide. At the last meeting, we were asked to provide a peer comparison of all funding using data available from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Budget and Tax Survey. We have provided a peer comparison as our peers reported each type of expenditure for education. To that end, we are assuming no overlapping categories listed on the handout and that each district has reported the full amount of their expenditures toward education. Additionally, this does not account for where other counties may be in their capital funding cycles. In reviewing this data, you see that Buncombe does rank highly among our peers. However, there's an important caveat to note here. The reason the figure before you is one hundred eighty million and the one on the previous slide was lower is mostly the Asheville City Schools Supplemental Taxing District. Those revenues, of course, only go to Asheville City Schools. But for the sake of this analysis, they have been counted with total student count. That would be the case for Orange County at the top of the list as well, who has a special district for Chapel Hill Cargo City only. I've also added columns on the handout to show the calculations without the special levy as a reference. Four of those counties listed above us on this slide. You may remember last week's handout showed Orange County's tax rate at eighty-six point two nine cents with Wake at fifty-one point three five cents from their recent property revaluation and Durham at seventy-nine point eight seven cents. Lastly, please note the green arrows on the slide. Those show the only districts that have an upward trend in student count over the last few years. All other counties have a decline. One of the other requests was regarding a published study. The Public School Forum of North Carolina annually publishes a local school finance study cobbling together publicly available data from the Department of Revenue and the Department of Public Instruction, among others. They attempt to establish a standard of comparison for all counties in the state for ability to fund against the amount funded. The most recent study utilizes fiscal year 2023 data. For Buncombe County, that means that the current study does not include the sixteen million more appropriated in fiscal year twenty-four compared to twenty-three. The study uses an adjusted tax base calculation rather than actual tax base to make comparisons of counties. By dividing tax base by the sales assessment ratio, the Public School Forum attempts to equalize counties who recently completed a property revaluation against those that may be at the end of their cycle but before reappraisal. The study's calculation assumes Buncombe County's tax base to be fifty-four point one billion in 2023, when it was actually forty-nine point two billion in that year, overshading available levy by almost five billion dollars. Using that adjusted tax base, the study then applies the statewide average effective property tax rate. Effective tax rate are, effective tax rates are the actual tax rate multiplied by the weighted sales assessment ratio. This is perhaps the clincher here. The study says Buncombe County's effective tax rate was forty-four point one cents, but calculates our adjusted revenue at the statewide average tax rate of fifty-eight point seven eight cents, over fourteen and a half cents higher. Combining those pieces, adjusted tax rate at fifty-eight point seven eight cents and fifty-four billion in base equals three hundred eighteen point four million in property tax revenue that the Public School Forum says the county should have generated for 2023. Our actual property tax revenue budget for 2023 was two hundred forty million, a difference of seventy-eight million. Lastly, the study identifies an income-adjusted total available revenues figure for their education calculations. Exactly how it adjusts for income is a little unclear, but they also utilize figures from the North Carolina Health and Human Services Department to estimate restricted revenues and remove them. Unfortunately, that does not account for all our restricted revenues. Nevertheless, their figure of unrestricted revenues is five hundred six million. Our total revenue, both restricted and unrestricted, received in the general fund for fiscal year 2023 was four hundred million, over one hundred six million. In summary, despite showing Buncombe as being sixth highest in the study in actual per pupil funding statewide for fiscal year 2023, their methodology bases its ranking of seventy-ninth on Buncombe County having an additional four point nine billion in taxable property and levying a tax rate of something like fourteen and a half cents higher. Of the ten highest base per pupil allocations in the study, only two counties, Orange and Durham, rank in their top forty of relative effort. The other eight rank between sixty-two and number ninety-nine of the one hundred counties in North Carolina. Now, I know that was a lot of information, a whole lot of information. So I'll pause here briefly for questions before I move on to the last slide.
This is fascinating, Sam. Thank you and John for tackling this. I know this is something that has been raised over the last few years, particularly as we head into education funding. So let me ask, in terms of Orange and, you know, Durham being in the top forty, the others not, we could assume that they're not in the top forty, they're falling in that ranking because they're using assumptions of data that may not necessarily be correct.
The, where I would go with Orange and Durham, like we saw on the prior slide, is they're taxing at a higher rate. And, and the value here is to tax, is to create a higher tax base and more tax revenue to generate and then, and then provide more of that funding to schools.
Correct.
So Orange and Durham are in that top forty with their higher tax rates would be the assumption that we would take away.
But I'm speaking to the ones that are falling into that sixty-two and ninety-nine like we are, that we could safely assume that it's because they're using some assumptions, some tax rates, some taxable property that's not accurate that is formulating those relative efforts.
Right. In their attempt to equalize out and find some standard of which they can apply to all counties, they make some assumptions. In so doing, they reward counties, for example, like John was saying, that have a tax rate above the statewide average. If you have a tax rate above the statewide average, it's likely that you may rank higher. On the other hand, if you recently did a property evaluation, your tax base that you'll be pulling from in that year more closely matches what they have in the study. So there's less variance that might look different in the real world as compared to their stuff. So those things combined, yes, those assumptions tend to separate out those things a bit more.
Thank you for the time and effort put into being able to really dig into that because I know sometimes that can be a challenge with these studies and like where they're pulling numbers, what they're doing. So thank you all for taking the extra time to do that for us.
I really appreciate it. Are there other questions for Sam and John in regards to this presentation?
Thank Sam again. And I, one question and then one request, I guess, would be, so it is, is this slide, Sam, that you think is the best analysis comparison tool that we could look at?
Most available data, yes. And that's from the Association of County Commissioners. That's, that's their data that they collect. So it's at the end of the year, wherever timeframe they ask for that. Folks are contributing that data and they maintain that.
Yeah, I think shortly after adoption, they sent out that survey.
Okay.
And so counties, so counties report back their information.
The issue is always, there's no context exactly. So how, you know, one county may differ, have a different interpretation of how to fill out that form. And I know that sounds like a strange way of putting it, but it does mean that, well, based on what we have, this is the best comparison we make, but there may be instances where it might not be accounting for something.
My request then would be, would be for staff to eventually, if you could combine this slide, the data on this slide with a previous handout we got at our previous budget retreat that had like the tax rates of our peer counties, that had the average household income, whatever data was on that slide to, to a bigger, more complicated spreadsheet, at least it would benefit me to look at that all in one place. Thank you.
I agree with that. Seeing it all, it's helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, y'all.
Our last piece here, I'll take a moment to add that unlike K-12 funding, community college funding is not required with the exception of Article Forty-six funds. But the commission has long provided dollars to AB Tech to support its local mission. General Statute one oh five, five thirty-eight point one says that Article Forty-six will support AB Tech specifically capital needs, but it allows up to five million to be used for operating costs. The county has given that five million and added operating costs as appropriated since 2021. The additional funding has grown from two million to three point seven million or in total, seven million to eight point seven million in the current year's budget. Are there any other questions?
So I think we're scheduled for a break. We'd like to take a break before we have our.
Commissioners, I have to dip that in because I want to make sure all of our education partners are here. And they are here so we can continue if that's your pleasure.
Does anyone need a break? All right. If not, let's keep moving.
Okay, well then we will start with AB Tech. Dr. Gasson is joining us today.
Thank you very much for having me. You are probably used to seeing Dirk Wilmeth at the table. He has retired. We don't see Dirk a lot anymore. His replacement, Chris Harshman, in the back of the room, is our new VP of Operations. Melissa Valco has taken on the title of Chief Financial Officer. And I think you've seen Beth Green before as our operations person that works, works this budget. Which button?
The one that goes down.
Thank you. We are honored to answer the call. I know somebody earlier called it the storm. I think it was really a disaster, and I'm going to use that phrase from now on. We're proud to be a part of the solution. We were proud to offer shelters and parking lots for our ambulances. Woodfin Campus became a FEMA town, if you will. And we were, we were very, very proud to be a part of that. As a result of that, the River Arches District has moved their farmer's market to our campus. Manah Food Bank also uses our campus for their operations. But as much work as we have done to get over this disaster, signs still remain. And from our campus, we can see the destroyed county vehicles in our parking lot. And from our campus, we can see the destroyed county vehicles in our parking lot, and it's a reminder every day. I will tell you, before we move forward, typically someone asks, well, how are the students? What's going on on campus? We lost twenty-five percent of our student body as a result of the disaster. For whatever reason, they stepped away from fall semester. Thankfully, they came back. Our spring numbers are looking better, up about four or five percent. That is on the for-credit side of the house. Now, on the non-credit side, we lost a month of instruction that was never to return, but our non-credit folks tell me that they have met last year's goal with a month remaining in the spring semester. So students are coming back, and they're telling us that they're very thankful to return to some level of normal. Five years ago, when I first met the county manager, I promised Ms. Pender, I will never present a bloated budget. What we present to you is what we need. Two weeks ago, I presented that budget. Ms. Pender and her staff encouraged us to go back and look deeper into our requests to meet your three point four nine percent reduction, and I am proud of the work that they did. They did that. They did that. There we go. This is a summary of our budget. The general appropriation was reduced. The draw from Article forty-six remained. The cash reserve on hand was reduced greatly, but the total number meets your request. Our spending for this year is on track for our twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and I'm sure you're asking, that's not a lot of reserve. No, it's not. Most of that reserve is used for repair and renovation for our buildings. We have quite a bit of deferred maintenance already on our books. This is that number. So our leadership will then be challenged in the next year. Can we defer that further into twenty-six, twenty-seven? Or will we need to go to the Joint Advisory Committee and ask for money from Article forty-six for repair and renovation? When the Joint Committee met, if you'll remember, back in late February, this budget was not in consideration. We didn't talk about that at all. We may have to come back at some time in the middle of the year. As you know, and I don't need to remind you, that we are faced with increasing costs as well. We understand that the water's going to cost more this year. Our electricity is going to cost more this year. Utilities are about seventeen percent of our total allotment, and those are costs that we just simply can't avoid. I will tell you that we have thought about, considered, looked at all kinds of ways to cut our utility costs while maintaining support for our students. One of the things that a lot of community colleges have done is gone to a four-day work week, ten-hour days. Personally, I'm not convinced that that serves students well. So that is not on our table as of yet. Where are we making the cuts? I think that's a legitimate question. From our request, we have cut six FTE, three in our law enforcement, three in operations. From last year's allotment, that cut is three FTE, two law enforcement, one in operations. We are planning on reducing, if not eliminating, the coverage we have had at INCA campus because we have learned that an awful lot of that, those requests for service have to do with unlocking doors rather than responding to law enforcement issues. We have, and I am proud of Chris and Melissa and Beth as they scoured this budget, looking at things we probably took for granted. As an example, when we started with our phones for our employees fifteen, twenty years ago, the phone companies were charging per text, charging per call. They don't do that anymore. Do we still need all of those numbers? The answer is no. So we have cut that out. We are renegotiating contracts based on what we have heard from our partner schools in ways that will also save our budget. I've already mentioned ongoing capital repairs, Article forty-six. Our energy manager on staff continues to find deficiencies with our aging buildings as well. So in summary, we're requesting eight million, three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars from the county. I will tell you that the Article forty-six funds for operations, while we appreciate that, is about sixty percent of our county allotment, which that number surprised me as a matter of fact. Commissioner Moore sent a message to my office asking about Article forty-six, and I think, Commissioner Moore, how we have spent that money, was that the correct request?
Just enough of a presentation for us to have an idea of what's going on there.
Okay, all right. Sure, sure. It's some exciting uses of that funds. New roofs was a part of Article forty-six. In the last couple of years, many of you know, we have purchased property on Victoria Road to make our campus contiguous. Right now, that is a parking lot, but it is one of the last potential places for a new build. So we're very thankful to be able to use that money for that. We have completed the demolition of the tower at INCA. Right now, it's a grassy knoll. We're excited about the possibilities there. I will talk about those possibilities in a moment when I talk about our facilities master plan. Stormwater project, this is an ongoing project, about two or three years in the making. Water was running off our campus into our neighbors. They didn't like that. We didn't like that either. We want to be good neighbors.
Sure did.
Well, you shouldn't have that problem anymore, Ms. Wyssides. So again, we are very, very proud to be your partner and your neighbor. Thank you very much. It's not complete yet, but I think it's going to be a good addition to our campus. So, let's see where we are. Not there yet. Facilities master plan, oh, excuse me. Are there other questions about Article forty-six? Next year, we are expecting to spend, I think the Joint Advisory Committee agreed to spend about a hundred thousand dollars for some cabinetry for our Vet Tech program in the Humane Society there off of Brevard Road. The last thing I want to talk about, our facilities master plan, a year in the making. It was started with room utilization study, a very slick software package that they were able to put in classes and number of students and tell us which rooms are being utilized, which ones are not. They also did focus groups, both internal and external. I will not get into detail this morning about that master plan because my board has not seen the final draft. You are all welcome to attend my board meeting Monday afternoon, three o'clock on our campus, if you'd like to see the details. The broad thought is making our campus safer, making it more pedestrian-friendly, getting traffic off of Victoria Road in a more meaningful way. Right now, I think there's twelve or thirteen places to come and go off Victoria. They want to reduce that. Get cars to the back of campus in a safe manner, and that makes it safer for students as well. Much of what they are suggesting that we do breaks down the silos that education tends to find itself in. Those silos will not exist in the future of community college education. We can't afford for them to exist. So their suggestions help us break those down. They also gave us some ideas about the INCA campus, which we're excited about, and as you don't know, but you need to know, the one place with the highest room utilization, Woodfin Campus, where we do fire EMS, law enforcement. It was real close to a hundred percent occupied. So we will be talking with you in the future as we move forward with this master plan. I will tell you, there is good news and bad news in the master plan. The good news is it's a ten-year project. The bad news is it's three hundred and forty million dollar suggestion. Now, I'm not going to ask for it all at once. Thank you for giggling. I may not ask for it at all, right?
That's all right, too.
But I probably will. Our leadership team will work with our board to prioritize safety. As you know, many of our buildings are past useful life. I think our newest building's about ten or fifteen years old. So we're going to look at safety first. Our board is going to look then at programs and what do we perceive the future needs of this community are going to be? We want to serve that, serve that well. I wish our friends in the fire departments had stuck around because we do so much of their professional development. Proud to be partners with that community. Proud to be partners with our K-12 friends, working to help students matriculate through to the world of work, whatever that choice is. And Maggie and Rob are great partners, excited to be working with them to solve students' dreams. What questions do you have?
Dr. Gossett, would you say the master plan is at three PM this coming Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And where is that?
It'll be on our main campus in our Magnolia Building.
Okay, thank you.
Top of the hill.
And thank you for being such a good partner through Helene, certainly, and afterwards. We certainly appreciate that, and I definitely appreciate you taking the county manager's request to heart and working so diligently with your team on getting the budget.
I'm scared of Avril. Not really. She's been wonderful. She has been absolutely wonderful, and I have worked with several county managers in my history, and second place is not close. Ms. Pender is the best county manager I have ever worked for. Thirty-seven year career.
Worked with...
Did I say four? That slipped out. I'm so sorry. I'm so, yeah, that, you know...
We're good friends.
We are good friends. Thank you for... It is a long night. I didn't... What other questions do you have?
Any other questions for Dr. Gossett?
Just a quick one. One, blink twice if you need help. Two, I was curious, your reserve seems a little bit low. What can we do to talk about bolstering that up? Is there some policy? Are you, is AB Tech in desperate need for something there? Because that number, I saw that number, and the percentage amount is relatively small.
It is remarkably small, and it's not a number that we're happy with. Typically, we're at about four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars in reserve. What we did not, what we wanted to preserve was our employees. The county employees at AB Tech are really our lowest-paid employees. So if we were going to keep that reserve, that means we are going to have to cut deep into those county employees, where at senior level, one or two can make up all of that difference. At that level, it would have been five to ten, which would decimate the work they do.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you as a former student of AB Tech.
What did you study?
LPN, back in two thousand and eleven.
Oh, awesome.
So thank you for what you bring to our community. Amazing instructors. I love AB Tech.
Thank you. I do, too.
I just wanted to thank you all for being such incredible partners with the county. I mean, not only finding these savings, but also during the disaster with few options to house hundreds of people who were displaced, AB Tech really stepped up and opened up a number of your campus buildings to house people and allow Red Cross to operate out of. As I was running supplies around the community, I saw that firsthand. I'm curious if there, I mean, that obviously has wear and tear on your facilities, and I'm curious if you all have been able to find the funding to take care of that and how that's going.
I know that FEMA has gotten a lot of bad press lately. They have been real good with us. We see a representative, Beth, what, about once a week, once every two weeks, helping us identify things that are allowable. So we hope that reimbursement comes sooner rather than later because of the amount threshold that we find ourselves. We had discussed, do we put that in this budget? And the answer was, based on history, FEMA is not quick to pay those bills, leave it out. So then, if we do get paid in this fiscal year, then that will help to alleviate some of the cuts we've made. But I appreciate the kind words. AB Tech is blessed with square footage. We're blessed with parking lots, and as a human, to tell the county, no, you may not use my campus, that would have been a fireable offense in my mind. So I am thankful that we have that opportunity to help you. Well, not help you, help the community, help Western North Carolina.
Thank you for doing it.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks to you and your team. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question for staff in regards to following up to Commissioner Moore's question on Article forty-six. Is it possible for us to have a little more documentation? I'm kind of looking at Matt. Like, we get for school capital to see the expenses and what projects are open and what has been closed since Article forty-six. Thank you. That'd be great.
So next, we have Buncombe County Schools with us. And we're going to quick change of presentations here.
Thank you. Just goes to answer. I know what it's doing.
Sit this down.
Thank you, David.
Because it's the button. And all it goes down.
This is what it feels like.
Thank you. You can try.
It's the same.
It's the same.
It's the same.
Did you have a PowerPoint before?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I was afraid that was just the... Thank you.
Good morning.
Thanks for joining us, Dr. Gossett.
Madam Chair Edwards, Vice Chair Moore, Commissioners, Madam County Manager, thank you for the opportunity to spend some time with you this morning, to share with you the successes of our school system, the challenges that we all face together, and the opportunity to grow forward. It strikes me that this is the third budget request presentation that I've made before the county commissioners. Time flies. Three years ago, as I finished my third school year, having had the blessing of returning home, three years ago, as I appeared before you, I was the new superintendent that you weren't quite sure about. We've now had the opportunity to work together, to have many conversations in many venues. I want to especially thank the commissioners who have had the opportunity already to serve as a principal for the day in our school system, and for those who haven't yet had that opportunity. We look forward to having you in the buildings as often as possible. I'd also like to say thank you to our county manager yesterday. She again delivered the opening remarks for Special Olympics on the campus of TC Robertson High School. And so we very much value the relationships that we have with our county managers, or with our county commissioners, and with our county manager and our county staff. I appreciated the conversation earlier that was led by Sam. As you've heard me say in this meeting and in our board meetings, over the course of the three years that I've been here, I have shared that we are blessed by the investment that Buncombe County places in our school system. That hasn't changed, so we certainly appreciate that and look forward to sharing with you this morning. As we go forward, you may recall my first year, I shared with you that we would engage in literally thousands of conversations, and we did that through thirteen town halls, thirteen community town halls, thousands... And so we very much value the relationships that we have with our county managers or with our county commissioners and with our county manager and our county staff. I appreciated the conversation earlier that was led by Sam. As you've heard me say in this meeting and in our board meetings, over the course of the three years that I've been here, I have shared that we are blessed by the investment that Buncombe County places in our school system. That hasn't changed. So we certainly appreciate that and look forward to sharing with you this morning. As we go forward, you may recall my first year, I shared with you that we would engage in literally thousands of conversations. And we did that through 13 town halls, 13 community town halls, thousands of survey results, conversations in all 45 of our schools with our staff. All of that resulted in our strategic plan that was approved by our Board of Education. And I'd like to highlight and share my thanks with our board members. We have four of our board members here with us this morning. I appreciate their, their being here and the time and effort that they've put into our budget this year. We just finished six budget work sessions. And the reason this was just handed to you is they met last night to approve our budget request. So that is hot off the press and we certainly appreciate that. However, as we work through all of those conversations, we did so to develop our strategic plan. That was approved in May. And this year, everything that we have engaged in has been absolutely focused on our strategic plan, going through and continuing through even our budget request. It's very important to me that my life and our school system reflects our core beliefs and our core values that are first and foremost a part of our strategic plan. And so as the operation of the school system goes forward, our community should be able to say very clearly and with great belief that we walk our talk, that our core, core beliefs and core values show up in all that we do, including those places where we talk about budgets and finances. As you know, we start our presentation with the question, how are we doing? There's a state statute that says the state, the school system superintendent is to report to the county commissioners on the academic attainment of our students. Typically, as I sit here, I'm reporting data that's almost a year old. We are just a couple of weeks away from our end of grade assessments for our third through eighth graders and our end of course assessments for our high school students. And we look forward to receiving that data in the weeks to come and we'll be happy to share that with you. Today though, I want to share with you how we're doing, but grounded in the context of where we are. And so we start the question with how are we doing? For 2023, 2024, our most recent data available was very happy that 35 of our schools met or exceeded growth. Growth is the best metric of how a school is doing. It looks at every single individual student, where they are, where they start at the beginning of the year and where they finish the year. And so if we've met growth or exceeded growth, we've done our job. And we're not satisfied yet. We won't be satisfied until we can say 45 schools have exceeded growth and we're well on our way. One way to measure whether or not we're on our way is through continuous improvement and looking to see if we are seeing continuous improvement in the Buncombe County school system. As we look at this particular metric, how are we doing? The state identifies and designates low performing schools. I will tell you, I hate this designation. The thing that it measures best is where poverty is located in the state of North Carolina. However, it is what it is and we recognize that it's a metric that the state uses. In 2021, 2022, as I arrived, and this is no credit to me, it's a credit to our incredible school system, we had 13 of our schools that were designated as low performing. The following year, 10 schools were designated as low performing. This past year, nine schools were designated as low performing. As I look at that slide, what I see again is continuous improvement. We look forward to zero schools being designated as low performing. It's extraordinarily difficult. Some would say impossible, but clearly it's not impossible. But extraordinarily difficult for a school to shed that designation as low performing. This represents incredible work on the behalf of our faculty and staff. It shows the love and dedication, the long hours they've worked and the way they pour themselves into our students. And so I'm quite proud that we see that number continuing to go down. As we asked our question, how are we doing though? The best metric for measuring that, I believe, is our cohort graduation rate. Cohort graduation rate takes the number of students on the first day of ninth grade and measures how many graduate on time on the last day of their 12th grade year. Two years in a row, I've shared with you that our students broke the record. The highest ever graduation rate cohort graduation rate in our school system was 2023, when it was 90.98%. That record stood for a whopping one year until the class of 2024 crossed the stage and it grew to 91.5%. We're well on our way to breaking the record again. And this year will be interesting as we see what our results are. We certainly appreciate all of the hard work that's gone into this year as we prepare for graduation. And you're certainly invited to graduation ceremonies at all 11 of our high schools that'll be coming up in just about a month. However, as we think about how are we doing, we cannot fail to situate and ground the conversation in context. As you're well aware, as our community is well aware, on August 20, or September 27th, excuse me, Hurricane Helene arrived in our community. Our community was devastated. Our neighbors were devastated. It was a great loss. Our school system experienced great loss. As you know, seven of our buildings experienced significant damage. Bigger than that, more tragic than that, our school system lost four students. We had staff members who lost family members. We have students who lost family members. We have buses that can't drive where they used to drive still today. We have families that are displaced still today. And so we recognize that our entire school year has been impacted greatly by what the North Carolina Department of Commerce shared in a presentation to our Board of Education as the worst natural disaster in the history of the state of North Carolina. In fact, the presenter went on to say that the disaster that is Hurricane Helene was two times worse than the worst natural disaster in the history of North Carolina. That certainly puts in context what our community has endured and continues to work through. We recognize though, that in that moment, we knew our focus would be and continue to be grace and strength. The lens that we approach our work is through those two things, grace and strength. Recognizing that from even the greatest tragedy, together we rise. In the moments that followed the hurricane, I teased that our county manager, our assistant county manager, Tim Love, and our assistant county manager, Sybil Tate, our sheriff, Quentin Miller, our emergency management director and several other county staff had my cell phone number, once cell phones began to, to work again on speed dial. There were a lot of phone calls. And in each of those phone calls, there was a request. Some of the requests were made at a table in the emergency operations center where I was there day after day, seven days a week, because it was what we needed to do for our community. And in those requests, whether that was can the school system gas our law enforcement vehicles? Can our school system fuel the emergency response vehicles? Can our school system house something related to the storm on all 45 of our school campuses? Whether that was housing law enforcement or ambulances from across the state and across the nation? Whether that was housing lay down yards for due power, for new power poles and new transmission? Whether that was housing distribution centers at our schools or finding staff to help man those distribution centers? Whether that was asking a staff member, two staff members to hike up the top of a mountain, literally carrying diesel fuel, put diesel fuel in a generator so the cell phone tower would continue to operate? All requests that wouldn't be typically thought of of the public schools. I'm proud that we demonstrated our core values in each of those requests. And I don't say this in a way to brag on anything other than to say, we are blessed by our public schools throughout North Carolina. Because in our moment of greatest need, when the request was made, the answer was always and consistently, yes, we will. One of the biggest questions we began to get a week, two weeks after the storm was, can we get our schools open? We did not have potable or non-potable water. And the answer was consistently every single time. We will open our schools as soon as we possibly can. We're not going to assign an arbitrary date or any of that sort of thing. We're going to open them as soon as we possibly can. And that's exactly what we did. As we contemplated that, we were asked, can you open schools without water? I can tell you that through all my grad classes, through all my lived experience, you can't run schools without water. But that's what we were asked to do. And thankfully, non-potable water began to flow. And so the request was, can you deliver over 100,000 bottles of water a day to all the county schools, all the city schools and all the charter schools? And again, the answer was yes. And I'm proud that we were able to answer yes because we recognize our county and our citizens have made a great investment in our school system. And it was a moment when our citizens in our county said, we've been investing in the public schools and we need something. And our school system was able to say, yes. I'm so proud of our team for the work they did and I apologize for getting emotional. For all of us, this has been something. We certainly recognize that. We were so blessed to bring back our students. I will share with you that since the hurricane's arrival, over 1,200 students have been identified as McKinney-Vento. That's the nomenclature for homeless students or displaced students. Of those, 971 are related to the storm. We still have students who are living in all of the stories you've heard. In tents, sharing couches, they're in hotel rooms, they're any place that they can find. Families are in crisis and children come to school every day, walking away from what is happening into our schools and they find a safe place. They find teachers and faculty who care for them, who take care of them, who do what it takes to make sure that our students are being supported and our staff members are being supported. We've had the opportunity for almost two decades to work with Cherie Love Ray, who's helped us with our student crisis or our crisis management planning. Initially, all of her help was around if there is a tragic death of a staff member or a student, how do we respond to that? She helped us create our crisis response teams. So when that happens, we have counselors and social workers and others who respond to the school to be there for the students and be there for our staff. She actually has worked with school systems across the entire country. When there's been a school shooting, God forbid we ever have that in Buncombe County, when there's been some other disaster. She came in after the storm arrived and has helped us throughout as we've worked through the path to recovery. She shared this from research and we found it to be true. And so as we look at this graph, we see impact where the storm hit. Following the storm, she told us to expect a period of heroism. And we certainly saw that. As everyone in this room did things like we heard Commissioner Ball talking about delivering supplies. People were doing what it took to take care of neighbors. And we were told to expect that and we saw it and it was absolutely incredible. When we opened our schools, we worried that our attendance would be low, that our students would not want to be there. And we found the opposite to be true. Our attendance was high and our students were absolutely happy to be with their friends and their teachers because they needed to be there. We were told to expect that honeymoon period as they were able to, after a month, come back to school and have some sense of normalcy in their life. We're then told, especially around the six month anniversary mark, which was March 27th, to find this period of disillusion. We've seen that with poor behavior choices on the rise. We've seen that with our attendance rate going down. We've seen that with staff members who retired, who are, their attendance isn't maybe where we want it to be. And we were told to expect that because we know there are cascading effects to the hurricane. We've heard other speakers today talk about, we still drive past what happened on September 27th. We see that through the windows of our buses and we see that as we drive to work. We know that we have trigger events along the way. The first time, there's a birthday and there's a chair empty. Or the first time we celebrate a holiday like Christmas or Easter. We recognize the six month anniversary mark was one of those times. The one year anniversary on September 27th will again be one of those times when our teachers look out. I can share with you that our end of grade recognition ceremonies and our graduations that we're so excited about will also be one of those times. As there are those who can't attend, family members who aren't there or students who aren't there, we recognize those trigger events. As she was recently with us, meeting with our counselors and our administrators and with our leadership team, she shared with us that often what they see after a major natural disaster or some sort of crisis event like a school shooting is that the second year can be more difficult than the first year as folks are learning the new normal and working through all that continues to happen, like decisions that have to be made months and weeks later because of what happened when the impact was initially there. And so certainly we, we are preparing for that as we prepare for the new school year. We recognize for our students to be successful though, we have to ensure that we are supporting every one of our students. Supporting our students in this moment and always is ensuring that they find a place of safety in their schools, that they feel safe there, that they have a sense of belonging, that they know this is my teacher, my classroom, my school. Here I am known by name, here I am loved and here I'm cared for. We also understand we have to sustain emotional support for our students, particularly for all of the trauma that we've all lived through. And so supporting our, every student is a big part of what we're doing every single day, but it's also a big part of our budget request. And so as we move into the budget request, typical from the budget requests that I've shared with you each year, we'll go through some elements. I'll, I'll slide through some of those as quickly as possible, but certainly always, always very open to answer questions and share any data that any of the commissioners may wish to have. First of all, very quickly, we'll talk about our annual planning and budget process, very similar to the counties, our budget cycle and development, challenges we have, our current landscape with regards to enrollment trends. There's been some questions about that. Our revenue overview, some budget assumptions, particularly around personnel, and then actual budget request. And so our budget cycle is ongoing. It never ends. We are continually analyzing where we are with regards to our budget. Our finance department, like yours, works three years at a time. They're finalizing work for the previous year and preparing for our auditors. They're working in the current year and planning for the new year. They develop the plan. We go through the plan. As we go through the year, we're continually working on implementing the plan and focused on our strategic plan, managing it and analyzing it throughout. Budget challenges this year. As you know, I know the commissioners hated having to make a decision of reducing our budget in the middle of the year. That was extremely difficult and we, we all recognized that 3.9, approximately 3.9 million dollar reduction to Buncombe County schools in a budget that is 84% personnel had, had impact. Thankfully, we've been working very hard on rightsizing our school system. And so we were able to use our fund balance so that we did not have to cut any positions during this school year. And that was absolutely critical to be able to continue forward in supporting our students. From that, we have a reduced local county appropriation base in terms of our starting point. And that's certainly a challenge for us. There's a challenge around Article 39 and decisions that'll be made around that. A challenge around salary and benefit rates, and I'll talk about how that becomes a challenge for our local budget. Utilities and insurance rate increase, you've heard about that. You heard about that from my good friend and partner, Dr. Gossett, who's just absolutely amazing. I'll say, he said we have the finest county manager and I didn't disagree. I'll say we have the finest community college president because he's absolutely incredible. Challenges around inflation and tariffs and how that impacts all of the things we do. Position costs related to enrollment growth or decline. Our state budget is based on ADM or enrollment. If we lose 20 students, if they all were in third grade at one school, it'd be easy to say, cut one teacher. But if you lose 20 students and they're one student in each of 20 schools, you can't cut a teacher because you still have students in every one of those classrooms. That becomes a challenge. The challenge around our charter school enrollment impact that certainly is something that's been ongoing. This is a long session, as you're aware of, in the General Assembly, which means we don't know when we'll get a state budget. There's been one year that I was serving that the state budget came in in November. That's problematic when we start school in August and we need to hire teachers to be there on the first day of school, but we don't know the state budget until November. And so we hope the General Assembly works a whole lot quicker than they have in the past. And of course, unknowns around our state, federal and local projected allotments. Each year, we of course, just remind ourselves that school boards can't levy taxes, they can't issue debt. And so we are dependent on our local, state and federal governments to provide for the students of Buncombe County schools through the allotments that we receive. Our hiring does have to take place before there's a state budget, as I mentioned. As they approve the budget, we find and discover unfunded mandates where we are required to do things with no funds attached. And we find those things deep in the state budget sometimes. Majority of our state and federal funding is based on ADM and I've mentioned that in terms of our membership of our students. And so I want to talk about our enrollment. This was a place that I will tell you, late at night, running one night, I found myself getting very emotional about this because it's something that I felt very positive about and been very excited about. So on this slide, you will see our ADM, our average daily membership since the onset of the pandemic, starting in 2021, or 2020, 2021. The school month is 20 days long. And so the numbers on the screen right now are month one, the end of our first month. And you'll see in 2021, we had 22,073 students. In 24, 25, we had 22,000 students. As we look at those numbers, we realize that Buncombe County schools had a gain of 100... had a gain of a hundred and three students from two thousand thirty-three, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. We were within seventy-three students of regaining our pandemic onset enrollment. We have worked extremely hard in two areas. One, telling our story so parents are aware of the incredible things happening academically, athletically, and artistically in our Buncombe County schools. And two, intentional invitations. For two years, we've sent letters to the parents of every child in a charter school to say, hey, we would love to invite you to come into our elementary school or intermediate school or middle school or high school. Let us give you a tour and share with you the incredible opportunities in our public schools. And we've seen our students returning to Buncombe County schools and being very happy with that. And so we anticipated this year would be the year that we got back to where we were because we've been working hard to make sure that parents know, I believe in choice when it comes to education. I also believe the best choice is in our public schools, in our traditional public schools. And so we were excited about that. Of course, we know what happened on September twenty-seventh. Month six is our most recent data, so this is after day one hundred twenty. We should get month seven data very soon. As we look at our data for month six, first I want to highlight that in two thousand thirty-three, two thousand twenty-four, we were actually three hundred nine students above where we had been the year of the pandemic onset. We see our ADM actually go down in the second half of the year. That's typical because we have early graduations. So we have students who graduate, so our numbers go down as those students leave the school system. And so we were really excited. You can imagine the celebration in my office when I saw those numbers that we were so far ahead. This year though, after what's gone through, we are now, as of our most recent data, two hundred eighteen students fewer than we were the previous year. We've lost about two hundred fifty-one students since the hurricane. We are hoping to get those students back, but we understand that housing is a part of that. Anecdotally, we're hearing from our social workers that there are families who rented homes and the rental home is no longer there and they're not sure if the owner's going to rebuild the rental home. And so lots of stories. When you have twenty-two thousand students, there's lots of stories and every single story is important and every single story impacts the work we do. And so in terms of our enrollment, we have certainly seen that decrease post-hurricane. Prior to the hurricane though, we were really excited about growing back our enrollment. And so that does have impact on our budget. Another thing that impacts our budget is that in our school system, we've seen a sixty-three percent growth in our multilingual learner population, our ML population, those students who English is not a first language. That has grown exponentially. As an aside, I will tell you that three weeks ago, I believe it was, I was invited to Greensboro by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction where the migrant education programs for the school systems from across the state were having their annual meeting. I was invited there along with Dr. Reed, our associate superintendent, because they were surprising our migrant education program staff members as they were selected as the school system program in the state of North Carolina for continuous improvement and continuous growth for their work with our migrant population. And we're extremely proud of that. Now, our migrant population does not represent all of our ML population, but they're a part of it. We saw through what happened this year, the trusting relationships that our staff have built with families who may be distrustful of anything related to the government, were willing to share with us and listen and take advice from our staff members because a lot of work had gone into building those relationships. And so I was very proud as our school system was acknowledged for that hard work. Also, within our enrollment, almost thirteen percent of our students are classified as exceptional children. I'll tell you, all of our students are exceptional in Buncombe County schools. About thirteen percent qualify for special services. Exceptional children tend to require additional services. Some have one-on-one personnel, if they have a feeding tube or some sort of physical need. Some have one-on-one instructional assistance if they have behavior needs. And so that particular student may actually cost more than a quote-unquote typical student might. And so understanding that as a portion of our population is certainly important from a budgetary standpoint. And so as we begin to look at our revenue, our revenue by fund, just to give you a feel, Fund One for us, our state fund, there is legislation being considered for the second straight year around a weighted student funding formula. A weighted student funding formula looks at the needs of the individual students and then funds based on those needs. Potentially, that could be great value to the school system if they look at the needs of our students and say, this student costs more to educate, so here's additional funding. The details though, remain to be seen and so we're paying close attention to that. There's also a separate bill looking at weighted student funding formula for exceptional children. And so we're not sure if that'll go through, but it's certainly something we're paying a lot of attention to. The county appropriation, we've discussed. At the federal level, as you know, there's been lots of conversation around the potential disbanding of the Department of Education. Where that impacts us, we've been told that potentially the funding that flows to the school systems would continue to flow. But as I think about the needs of our students today, if they are setting up funding that will now flow through other federal departments, eventually to the state, to the school system, those processes aren't in place today and it will take time to set that up. But our students are coming to school. And so I worry that there could be a gap between that being set up, if that's what happens, and actual funding arriving in Buncombe County schools. So certainly something we're paying attention to. The capital, we've talked about in terms of what might happen with Article thirty-nine. In terms of school nutrition, as you know, for the last two years, we've been very proud to be able to utilize community eligibility provision, which allows us to offer free breakfast and lunch to all of our students. That's a year-to-year decision based on the budget. It's based on participation rates. And so right now, optimistically, depending on decisions that are made by our government leaders at all three levels, we're optimistic we'll be able to do that for at least one more year and we hope to always be able to do that. It makes a difference. Food is the number one school supply for a child. If they're not well-fed, they cannot learn. That's very clear and so we're excited about that. However, there is some uncertainty around the future of that funding. That funding flows through the Department of Agriculture in terms of child nutrition and so we pay attention to that. Childcare is also a fund that we're very concerned about. As you know, childcare opportunities are not where they need to be, simply to have spots for childcare. And it's quite expensive. We're proud of our preschool programs that we have in four of our high schools. It allows us to do two things, one, provide childcare, but two, it also allows students who have that as a career interest to work in those programs and it is a definite value add. One of the things we depend on there is the money that we receive from the county. And as the budget is determined by the county, that'll certainly let us know where we are with that. And so that's something we're paying attention to. And then our Fund Eight, which is the other specific revenue, probably the biggest thing there is that when our child nutrition department is doing well and there's a metric for that, we can charge them indirect cost. The kitchens use water and turn on and use power. And when they're doing well financially, we can charge them for that and that helps us with our cost. And so certainly with their uncertain future and what might happen there, something to pay attention to. So lots of challenges we're looking at. To give you a feel for how we spend the, or where the money comes from rather, for our school system, and this is as of March thirty-first, in our school system, fifty-six percent of what we receive comes from the state. Thirty-three percent comes from Buncombe County, thank you very much. Eight percent comes from federal government, three percent from other revenues. That percentage has shifted, as you may know, over the course of the last four years. Post-pandemic ESRS dollars brought a lot of federal money into school systems. That is now gone and so we're getting back to a typical representation of the percentage of funds that flow into our school system. Moving into budget assumptions, as we build our budget request and build our budget for the coming school year, eighty-four percent, as I mentioned again, as of March thirty-first, of our budget is personnel. What we offer, parents in Buncombe County, what we offer the community in Buncombe County, what we offer the citizens, is our incredible faculty. That's what we have to offer. Amazing teachers and staff who work so hard to help our students achieve their dreams and be prepared for bright futures. And so eighty-four percent of our budget being human capital makes perfect sense because we are in a people business. We understand that all we offer starts from a strong staff. We appreciate the commissioners who were able to be a part of our first convocation in decades. We had no idea when we were sitting in the sunshine at Reynolds High School in the stadium with our almost five thousand employees, we're, depending on the metric you look at, the second or third largest employer in Buncombe County. As we sat there and talked about, together we rise, and we would be challenged in that. And they stepped up and we very much appreciate it. Again, thank you to all who were able to join us, to be together. But that's almost all of the faces, it's hard to get them in one picture. But these amazing people do amazing work and they are what we offer to our citizens and families. In terms of rightsizing our school system, you've heard me mention that and so we wanted to give you some numbers around that. As I give you these two data points, April two thousand twenty-two and May of two thousand twenty-five, you'll see on both sides, first of all, permanent FTE or full-time equivalent positions in April two thousand twenty-two is three thousand three hundred fifty-one. You'll sometimes hear me refer to the number of employees we have as approximately five thousand. That number includes substitutes and coaches and quote-unquote temporary employees who work in the school system. But in terms of permanent FTE, April two thousand twenty-two, we had just over thirty-three hundred. At that time, our enrollment was twenty-two thousand eighty-six. This month, we have three thousand two hundred twenty-seven permanent FTE and our enrollment is twenty-two thousand fifty-two in terms of the state calculated ADM, which is the way they fund us on what they call the best one of two. You'll notice the change there is a negative three point seven or minus one hundred twenty-four positions from April twenty-two to May twenty-five and a difference of just thirty-four students. And so you'll see that we are rightsizing our school system from pre-pandemic staffing levels to be right-sized with the number of students that we have in our school system. We are doing that in a way that is intentional and careful and makes sense from both the fiscal responsibility lens, but also supporting our students. And so we're able to do that through attrition, through retirements and resignations and very, very hard work to make sure that we're rightsizing our system while providing the critical support services our students need. In terms of our budget assumptions, you'll see there the salary increases the state has given to state employees and to teachers since two thousand one, two thousand two, which gives us some opportunity to give our best guess for what might happen this year. We have received the governor's budget, we've received the senate's budget. We have not yet received the house budget at the state level. Typically, they will come together and there'll be a compromise budget. Usually, the governor is the highest and the senate's the lowest and the house is somewhere in between. And then we wind up, wherever it is, we wind up. And so to plan our budget, what we have put together is our best guess based on talking to everybody we possibly could, is a certified salary increase of approximately three percent. When we include the step increase that's a part of the salary, it's about a four point one, three percent increase. For our non-certified, or some would refer to as hourly staff, that increase is approximately two percent with a step increase of about three percent. FICO remains unchanged and so that's what our budget's based on. Our retirement rate is set at twenty-five point oh-two percent for this year's budget and our health insurance rate at eight thousand three hundred forty dollars per employee. And you'll see the details there. And so we've tried to be very careful in our budget planning to make sure that, you know, we are good stewards of the taxpayers' resources as you've come to count on from Buncombe County schools. In terms of those salary increases though, and how that impacts the local budget, as you heard from the previous presentation by Sam, our county commissioners have invested in our school system and done so in an incredible way. And I very much appreciate that. One of the ways that shows up for the children of Buncombe County schools is in six hundred sixty-one full-time equivalent positions that we have that are paid for with local dollars. And we appreciate that because we need all of those staff members. Our state does not provide, I think, adequate personnel to meet the needs of our students. And so we depend on our county for making up the difference and you do and we say thank you. When the state increases salaries for state-paid employees, they do not provide funding for employees that are paid locally. And so that becomes a request to the county. We also have in, among our staff, two hundred thirty-eight employees who are federally paid. Their salaries come through federal dollars. When the state increases salaries, they don't provide money for federally paid employees. So there's two hundred thirty-eight staff members or FTEs in federal funding. And so that certainly is impact on our local budget. To give you a snapshot in time, this was March thirty-first in terms of, I mentioned, the six hundred sixty-one staff members. And so this gives you an idea of, there's among that number, a hundred and seventy teachers, a hundred and thirty-four office support staff, there's seventy-five folks in the skilled trades, et cetera. That number changes as we maximize our dollars. From our state, we receive position allotments in some areas where they say, go hire a teacher. If they are a master's degree teacher with twenty-five years of experience, that's okay, go hire a teacher. If they're a brand-new teacher who doesn't have a master's degree and their salary is much less, that's okay. Go hire a teacher. With our local dollars though, it's a dollar allotment. And so by moving employees between allotments, we can maximize our dollars. And so there is a movement among our local and state personnel to maximize the dollars so that we are those good stewards of our taxpayers' resources. But this was a good kind of snapshot in time of the employees or at least the employee positions that are paid for locally as of March thirty-first. And so we turn to our budget request. In our budget request this year, we are requesting to maintain services. There's no expansion of programs. Last year, I requested additional ML teachers, there were other requests. This year, it's just simply to maintain the services for our students, understanding where we are. And so you'll see there's an increase, ten million three hundred fifteen thousand five hundred twenty dollars, broken down into three areas. The first is for the proposed increase in salary and benefits, which includes those items that I previously mentioned. The second, the two million dollars is what we refer to as the immutable cost of operations. You heard Dr. Gossett talk about increases in utility costs and insurance costs. We're working with our insurance broker to try to get good insurance at a much better rate. That is becoming more and more difficult. You'll see that the property insurance, we've experienced an increase of about a hundred and seventy-eight percent since two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. And so we're working to minimize that, but still, there's an increase there. There's also an increase related to inflation and then the tariffs as well. Then that final bucket, the four point one million dollars, allows us to maintain the services in terms of the number of positions we have serving our students. We'll continue to right-size and right-align our school system as we have opportunity, but we also recognize that in this moment, we're not in a place where we need to take away the services our students count on. And just for, just as a point of comparison, on the right side of your screen, you'll see the initial base allotment that we received for this past year of ninety-nine million two hundred ninety-six. Had we been able to maintain that, if we hadn't had to cut the allotment this, earlier this year, the increase to cover the increases in cost, there's not an expansion, would be six point five million dollars. And so however, we start from the ninety-five million after that three point nine million. And so that's where the ten million dollar increase comes from.
I'm sorry, that's, the delta is from ADM or from, what's the, what's the trigger for the change?
So last year, as we started the school year, the allotment to the school system was the ninety-nine million dollars number. And after the, um,
Oh, after they were, after we clawed money back.
Three point nine.
Yeah, I got you.
Our starting point drops to ninety-five million. And so it's just a matter of comparison to show if we'd been able to start where we started last year, that would be the increase as opposed to what the actual increase request. I apologize if that's not as clear as I intended it to be. Thank you. Okay. Very quickly, the commissioners always ask for some supplemental information. We're absolutely delighted to provide that. One of those requests is around school community impact funding. And so we try to share some of the ways we've been able to use those dollars in service to our community. Things like projectors and projection services in Irwin Middle School, things like playgrounds and improved security cameras at Estes Elementary School. This is a projection screen and projection system at Kane Creek Middle School. An incredible playground at Woodfinn Elementary School, we're very proud of and we appreciate being able to use some brated dollars there to make that happen. This is the playground at Hall Creek Elementary School. And we have the playground that has been expanded at Black Mountain Elementary School as well. Additionally, we wanted to share as, in response to a question we had about our early childhood education development program. I mentioned that briefly just a few moments ago. The program itself prepares our students to be successful in kindergarten and beyond. I'm convinced that the greatest lever for improving student success and decreasing achievement gap is early childhood education. High-quality four-year-old programs, high-quality three-year-old programs. And the commission has been wonderful to invest in that. And certainly, we certainly appreciate that previous investment. In terms of the program, certainly some of the pictures of our youngest learners in Buncombe County Schools, some three-year-olds who are in that program and doing amazing things. We're also asked about the Career Academy that's located at Irwin High School. We certainly appreciate the Career Academy. And so you have information about that that started in 2008, thanks to the commission as part of the graduation initiative. You'll see some details there in terms of when the Summer Bridge internship program started in 2016. There's no one type of student that's selected for the Career Academy. In looking at some of the metrics, though, here's the cohort graduation rate for the state of North Carolina, for Buncombe County Schools, for Irwin High School in general, where the program is located, and then for the students who are in that program. And so you'll see the program has been very successful. Additional demographics around that program, 104 students in the program. And you'll see the demographic comparisons there for the 2024-25 year and the 2023-24 year. Some information about Career Academy in my for the time in the meeting, so I'll leave that for you. Hospitality Camp is a part of Career Academy, and you just have some information there. It's been a value add certainly to the program. So we certainly thank you for the generosity and support through the school communities' impact projects. And at this time, I'd be delighted to answer any questions that the commission may have. And again, just want to say thank you for all that you've done for Buncombe County Schools, and that is heartfelt and genuine. Thank you.
How about, Dr. Jackson? Are there questions? Thank you.
I'll start. I just want to say, yes, thank you so much for your partnership, and thank you all also for everything that you did working in partnership with us during Halloween. We greatly appreciate that. And I am very excited to see the graduation rate continues to go up and the growth. Because as you know, as a former educator, I know that that growth is what is really the way that teachers really judge themselves, as to where their students started and where they ended. So I love to see that continue to grow up.
Yes, Dr. Jackson, can you give us a little bit more detail on the $4 million to maintain all services? What services is included in that wrapping?
Thank you for the question. One of the things that we've had to do to maintain our position levels is to lean heavily into our fund balance. Of course, we leaned even heavier into our fund balance. And so that allows us to maintain the position levels that we have among support staff, like counselors and assistant principals that the state doesn't allot at the same level. And so unlike the prior plot, that's more about salary increases, that's more about maintaining the positions that we've had to rely on fund balance to provide in previous years. Thank you for the question.
And the salaries and benefits, that is all dependent upon what the state does?
Yes, ma'am, it is dependent on what the state does. We try to, as we have in the past, do our best work to guess where the state will land. And so we're certainly not at the highest level where the governor may be. We're not at the lowest level where the senate is, maybe a little closer to that. But we're still hopeful that we'll see some good things once the House releases their budget. But that's our good faith effort to identify where we think the state will land.
That is to pay both the step increase plus what we think the state will do, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So there's two pieces in that number.
Yes, ma'am, that's right. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So can you, okay, I'd missed that point. Can you clarify that, so the step increase is not based on what the state will do? That's something different?
So the step increase, yes and no is really the answer. So the step increase is built in for our staff. And so, for example, staff members who are paid through local dollars, they have additional year of experience, their salary goes up. And so that's the step increase that's built in. And so that piece happens regardless of what the state does with salary increases. But then for those step increases, that step increase is based on a percentage increase if the state does that. And so we've estimated that. So, for example, the 3% for certified, once we calculate in the step increase, it's about 4.13%.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Absolutely.
I've got two questions. Am I understanding you correctly that as it relates to federal cuts, the elimination of the Department of Education, it's your analysis or understanding that you don't expect that to impact neither your federal FTEs nor underlying funding sources of any kind? Based on your assumption of what Congress has talked about so far?
Right, right. Understanding that we have no idea what's really going to happen, it is our current analysis that we're going to be more similar than different to what we currently have in terms of the funding. That said, we had a $1.9 million decrease to Title I that was unexpected, which helps us with our reading instruction in our elementary schools. That was this year prior to the hurricane. And so we never quite know exactly what's going to happen until we receive those federal allocations, and those come later in the fall, sometimes October through December. And so we're anticipating similar funding for the next year. And as good as I can feel about that, I feel good about it.
Okay. My second question is, I think Asheville City is going to show us some enrollment projections into the future. It's always tricky to try to predict the future, as you've mentioned a few times. Do you have that kind of data, too, that you could share with us that's forward-looking?
Absolutely, I do, and be happy to share that with you. Our school system, our Board of Education engages in a facilities report every single year, analysis of that, which includes our current capacity and projected capacity based on permits and all the things. We'll be happy to share that with the commissioners. Our board just received that about a week and a half ago. They receive that each year. Happy to share.
That's all I got so far.
Go ahead, Commissioner Val, and I know Commissioner Moore has questions.
Thank you. So, Dr. Jackson, thank you for this presentation and for all your steadfastness through a really difficult year and all your hard work to support the county and make sure that students could get back to normal as soon as possible. Just a quick clarification. And also, I want to thank you for enlightening us on enrollment. We hear a lot about following enrollment, and so kudos to you all for your work to bring that back up and recruit folks. Do you, well, separate question. Do you all also reach out to folks that are students, or parents of students that are in homeschool as well, and try and bring them back into the system?
We do through our social media posts to tell our story. We have the names and addresses of every charter school student because we have to send money to every charter school based on the student and based on their address. We don't have all of the names and addresses for students who may be homeschooled. And so that's more difficult to write the intentional invitation. So we try to do that through using social media to post the information. We also reach out to our homeschool community through dual enrollment opportunities, particularly around high schools. And we invite them to come into our high schools if their student has interest in participating in some of our extracurriculars.
That's great. So the budgetary question I had, so you said the increase request would be 6.5 million had we not had to institute the mid-year disaster reductions? So you would have planned to have spent from your reserves regardless?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Prior to the 3.9 million, and historical, correct me, we had approximately $6 million in fund balance we were using to balance our budget for the 24-25 school year as we continue to right-size our school system.
And so even if this increase were to occur, do you know what your fund balance would look like then? Would it be in better shape, or would it?
We'd certainly be in better shape if we had to use it for the 3.9 million dollars. One of the things that the school system did a great job of was utilizing the federal ESRS dollars to be able to build back the fund balance because it had gotten dangerously low, in my opinion. And so in terms of where we would have landed...
So we're still working through that. It's a moving target constantly. Fund balance moves every day because we are still going through all of our insurance, all of our FEMA, and all of our expenditures that we've not collected from FEMA yet, anything. So we're trying really hard, but we're definitely dipping into fund balance, and we know that. So the ultimate goal would be the same as you all, to try to end up with 15% of our local budget as a fund balance to be able to maneuver every month and pay payrolls and not knowing when our federal dollars are going to come in. So I don't think we're going to land anywhere near 15%, but that would be my ultimate goal.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by saying thank you, Dr. Jackson, for your presentation and giving us the broad view of what we're looking at here. I really appreciate the presentation and the context. And this can take place offline because I know y'all, we're working up to the 11th hour, almost literally here. But I would love to see a little bit more breakdown. I try to track from the recorded meetings a little bit of what that process looked like. But if you could give us a little bit more information, even if it's via email tomorrow, Saturday, the next working day, about the request to maintain all services and what that 4.1 million looks like so we can fully understand as we're making our decisions about what we do next.
Are there further questions? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson and Tina. We appreciate it. I've had a couple of head nods that we need to take a short break. So I will ask us to resume at 1:25. That's very precise.
an update for Asheville City Schools and our funding request to the commissioners as well. One, let's. Well, all right, here we go. We were off to a great start for this current school year. We had an amazing convocation to celebrate and energize our staff. And I think what excited our staff so much for this convocation is it was one hundred percent student facilitated, student led. We tapped some amazing student leaders and they really took the show and ran with it. And they just did an amazing job and we are gonna do that again every year. Everyone just really loved hearing from all of our students. But we also celebrated some very inspirational data that I'll share with you in a minute. The other big kickoff that we had this year was really leaning in to create a very strong instructional leadership focus. Not just instructional leadership for our principals, for assistant principals, for central office, but instructional leadership as it focused on our teachers being the instructional leaders in their classrooms. We set two really ambitious goals as we jumped into our school year. Number one is that all students will meet or exceed growth and that will increase our academic performance for our black students, up to fifty percent of our black students meeting grade level proficiency or higher. We knew we needed to take a stance and set that bar high so that we can achieve our goals. If we don't set the bar high, then we're never gonna get there. So, we were very intentional about setting a very high goal for all students and very intentionally for our black students. So, exciting, and this is what I shared at our convocation that got everyone really energized, is our student achievement from last year. Now, I've got all these graphs. They're gonna show the data in the same format, but just to help you understand what this data means, that gray bar is student achievement, that's the percent of students overall in Asheville City Schools that were grade level proficient in two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one. Then it's gonna track growth over the next three years. So, in two thousand twenty-two, that achievement went from forty-six percent to fifty-three point eight, an increase of seven point eight. The next year, it also increased by another one point three to be fifty-five point one percent of overall students reaching grade level proficiency. And then in two thousand twenty-four, an increase of two point five for an overall grade level proficiency rate of fifty-seven point six. The other piece of data that's also on these graphs is at the very bottom, I'm comparing our achievement increase to this overall state. So, as we increased two point five percent of our students meeting student, meeting grade level proficiency, the state only saw an increase overall of point six. So, you can see here, we are outperforming the state when it comes to the level of increased student achievement. And we know that we are really focused in Asheville City Schools on closing the achievement gap. So, I'm also gonna highlight how our black student group compared to overall. So, you can see while we still know we've got great levels of improvement, we are increasing. So, we increased by point three, uh, three point five compared to the state of only an increase of one point eight. For reading, three through eight, we did again see growth in our students reaching grade level reading. And as we improved by one point nine, the state increase was only point one. For our black student group, we again showed a growth in students meeting grade level proficiency by point eight, while the state was only an increase of point six. For math, we saw a nice, a really nice positive gain in our math achievement in third through eight with an increase of five point eight percent increase. And then again, to compare to the state, we're significantly outperforming the state, their increase was one point six. For our black student group in third, eighth through math, we saw a really nice increase of six point six percent grade level proficiency, while the state was only three percent increased proficiency. So, you can see here is that we are continuously outperforming the state in every area when it comes to improving our student achievement. We know it's not where we want it to be, but we are making really great progress. And also highlighting our graduation rate with, um, from last year, we again outperformed the state with ninety percent of our students graduating and the state level being eighty-seven percent. Now, this graph, this graph helps capture the achievement gap between our black and white students. And this is the only time when you talk about achievement and you want a negative number. So, for this, when you see a negative number, that means the gap is closing in achievement between our black students and our white students. So, a composite overall achievement gap closed by one point five percent. And then in the assessed subjects, it closed in three out of those five with a significant closing for our math level students at the high school. The other huge celebration that really got everyone in our school system excited is that none of our schools are designated as low performing. Every student, every school met or met or exceeded growth for our two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then we know very quickly, as we've heard, Helene came and changed our worlds. But Asheville City Schools, we didn't sit there. Much like our Buncombe County partnerships and AV Tech in the county, we rallied to support our community through many different efforts. And some of the most that I think really helped our community most directly was our Community Resource Center that we opened at the William Randolph Campus. The number of volunteers, the number of resources that we were able to distribute is we donated goods to over two thousand families. And we feel really proud about that support in a community that really needs it. And the other highlight, I think, for Hurricane Helene is our teachers reached out to me and said, "We wanna do something. What can we do to help our students?" And from that, that reach out is they built the Bridge to Learning Program. And we opened Isaac Dixon for K-12 students and we brought students back for four days of really engaging and energizing learning, but also to support their social emotional skills. So, that we knew as we were working on coming back, we would already have that touch point for our students, that it wasn't just nothing. And then all school at once, students were able to come back and have that opportunity to engage, to see friends, and to interact with really hands-on learning activities. What I loved about the Bridge to Learning Program is it was the reimagining of what schools could look like. Students walked in, they chose what they wanted to do for the day. They said, "Oh, I'm really interested in doing Lego robotics today." So, they picked Lego robotics and "I wanna do an outdoor activity" or "I wanna do theater." They made their own schedule as they walked in. And then we had high school students there to support and mentor. They got met by a high schooler, they walked them to their class, and the high school students also joined in participating and leading the activities. I can tell you, we had over two hundred students there each and every day. And the learning and engagement that we were seeing with our students during that Bridge to Learning ignited a passion with our teachers to reimagine what's possible when we think about our normal K-12 school day. I did also wanna capture some recent data. We were able to capture and get a glimpse at how Helene impacted our achievement since last year. So, what you're gonna see in these several graphs is some report on our mid-year data that we use to assess how our students are doing mid-year and see what corrections we may need to make or adjustments with different instructional practices. So, this is K-five reading. This is a universal screener that every student K-five takes in reading. And what it tells us is where our students are as the benchmark. And the benchmark changes. So, when a student comes in in first grade, it's got a benchmark. But after instruction happens, we know that benchmark should be higher. So, it allows us to track, to track if our students are on track or if our students need opportunities to catch up to where they should be. And what we saw last year for our mid-year data is sixty-four point eight percent of our students were at or above benchmark in reading. And after Helene and we assessed our students, we see that we did have some impact from Helene with a decrease down to sixty point four percent. So, that's a tangible impact of the learning loss that we experienced from not having school. We see a similar trend in math for K-five. Last year, our mid-year check showed that seventy-six point nine percent of our students were proficient. And mid-year this year, we are seeing that seventy point five percent are proficient. Now, as we learned over COVID, the lower the grade, the higher the impact of learning loss. So, we did anticipate some varied changes in eighth grade or sixth grade through twelfth grade, and that's what this data shows as well. So, you'll see some ups and some downs from our mid-year check-ins for our middle school students. So, you can see each grade level and the number there is the percent correct on their NC mid-year check-in data. And not surprisingly, there was a big decrease in eighth grade. And eighth grade math content is very deep, it's very rich, and it's much, it's a much different level than your sixth and seventh grade math. So, we, we knew that when kids came back, they were missing a lot of instruction on some key core concepts, and we knew we would see that in our data. High school, this is our first semester end of course exams, and this is the percent of students that scored grade level proficient. And again, you'll see a big impact here for Math One, and that's as anticipated, is that's another subject that just is really intense math concepts that they're learning for the very first time. And if they don't get that repetitive and instruction on that daily, we do know that we, we anticipated a decrease there. But we're pretty pleased with our students with the increased percentages in the other subjects. We also were requested to share some of the Helene-related funding that we've received. So, through the disaster recovery bills, we did get some recovery to help pay our school nutrition staff workers when schools were closed. And that was a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We also got about ninety thousand dollars to pay for mental health support. We did not need any technology or the second phase of school nutrition lost revenue. And the second, uh, the third phase of revenue, we did not get any funding from that. And then the final revenue provided us with about three hundred and ten thousand dollars to provide summer school programming in grades four through eight. Just as Dr. Jackson did, wanna highlight some changes or some, some of our budget numbers from last year. You can see our total budget last year was eighty-eight million dollars, around that. And one of the big improvements, thanks to Ms. Kearns, our CFO, was to update and implement a new hourly pay table to really provide clarity and consistent increase in salary as our hourly workers move up the pay grades. And really was allowing us to highlight and specialize salaries for our very specialized workers like plumbers and electricians to make sure that we're competing with the, with the, with the regional market. We did have major reductions in our stat, in our budget for FY twenty-five. The biggest came from consolidation of our two middle schools into one and then implementation of our staffing allotment formula, which did result in a decrease of eleven FTE positions across the board in our school district. And then we also did a ten percent budget cut to all non-personnel budgets across the board in our school system. So, I kinda give you a review of where we were last year for our budget. Again, we always use the Community School Impact Funds. And you can see this child is very happy that he has a lovely playground and really good mulch to roll around in as they're out there playing on our amazing playgrounds. So, Rob did make mention of this, the state senate budget, kind of the information that we know upcoming in the senate budget. Again, we haven't seen the house budget, but anticipate it'll be somewhere within this realm as we were planning our increases in cost and where we potentially would need to make cuts. So, we are seeing increase in salary for teachers, assistant principals, healthcare staff, principals, and other office staff, you know, anywhere of a range between one point two five or three point three across the two years. That budget did also propose cuts to central office funding by five percent and a reduction in dollars that will cover AP testing across the board. Just to also look at some of these other impacts that the budget will have for us is increasing the cost of our contribution to retirement as well as increasing the overall cost for our contribution to healthcare. So, I always try to make this really simple for everyone. When I think about budgeting and creating a balanced budget is you've got revenue loss, you've got increased expenses. And as we looked at our revenue loss, we had allocated three million dollars in fund balance for this year. And then we had to up that to four million after the reduction in the allocation from the county. So, we know if we don't cut those expenses, that will then have to be considered as reoccurring costs. So, we have to put that in our revenue loss bucket. Do anticipate a, a small decrease in our student, student funding from the state. And then the charter payments that we send out to our students that attend charter schools. And very excited to join Buncombe County in offering free lunch and breakfast to every student next year. But we do know that that is gonna cost us about half a million dollars to get that program up and going while we are trying to increase our participation rate. When we look at our increased expenditures for next year, our local supplement will cost us somewhere, it's a little bit lower than that two hundred and eight thousand. But as we look at increased steps and moving teachers up the salary schedule, we anticipate an increase of about two hundred thousand dollars in paying our local supplement, an increase in salary by one point three million. And again, those kind of costs that we know everyone is having to, to bear, the increased insurance costs and healthcare and utility as well as property insurance. So, as we looked at our ins and outs and trying to figure out what is the number we need in increased revenue or to decrease expenditures to balance our budget, that total came out to six point nine one million dollars. I wanna talk a little bit about why we have these revenue shortfalls. The slide kinda glosses over it with the increased expenditures and decreased revenue. But some of the things that are unique to Asheville City Schools is our pre-K program. We operate a pre-K program at five campuses, and we are not able to operate that at a cost neutral level. So, we spend locally about point eight million dollars to run our pre-K programming. Our school nutrition expenses, as I mentioned, moving to CPE as we work on increasing participation rates, that's gonna cost us, we anticipate a half a million dollars. Similar to Buncombe County, our percent of students that are qualified for Exceptional Children Program is fifteen point seven, fifteen point seven percent. And that costs us locally about two million dollars to provide the services that are required in those students' individualized educational plans. Talked a little bit about unpredictable and variable revenue shortfalls. But what I wanted to help the board, the commissioner see is the unintended, the unfunded salary fringe and benefits over time. So, what I did in this graph is I took an employee that is, have twelve years of experience, looked at their salary, added our local supplement, and said, "Based on the retirement rate, contribution, and healthcare costs," so you can see that increase in cost over time. So, in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, a staff member in Asheville City Schools, a teacher with twelve years of experience, we would have contributed about twelve thousand dollars for their healthcare. Compared to twenty-five, twenty-six, we're gonna contribute about fourteen thousand five hundred. Oh, yes, sorry. That's retirement. Thank you, Heidi. And then the bottom one, the red, is our cost for healthcare per employee. And you can see that cost increase going up over time. And we already know that for twenty-six, twenty-seven, that cost is gonna go from eighty-five hundred to about eighty-nine hundred. So, we're seeing that increase continue to, to process. The other thing I really wanna touch on is state allotments. So, we know that the state provides us allotments, and then whatever we don't get from the state, we've gotta fund locally. So, state allotments come in many different forms, either a position per student, it could come in months of employment, or it could come in dollar amounts. So, we got our allotments, our preliminary allotments April fourth. But there's still several bills out there, I think has already been mentioned, that could impact state allotment formulas. So, we're keeping on our eye on those. So, this is really just our best estimate as we were looking at those ups and downs arrows. Last year, our midyear check showed that seventy-six point nine percent of our students were proficient. And midyear this year, we are seeing that seventy point five percent are proficient. Now, as we learned over COVID, the lower the grade, the higher the impact of learning loss. So we did anticipate some varied changes in eighth grade or sixth grade through twelfth grade, and that's what this data shows as well. So you'll see some ups and some downs from our midyear check-ins for our middle school students. So you can see each grade level and the number there is the percent correct on their NC midyear check-in data. And not surprisingly, there was a big decrease in eighth grade. And eighth grade math content is very deep. It's very rich. And it's much, it's a much different level than your sixth and seventh grade math. So we, we knew that when kids came back, they were missing a lot of instruction on some key core concepts, and we knew we would see that in our data. High school, this is our first semester end of course exams, and this is the percent of students that scored grade level proficient. And again, you'll see a big impact here for Math One, and that's as anticipated is that's another subject that just is really intense math concepts that they're learning for the very first time. And if they don't get that repetitive and instruction on that daily, we do know that we, we anticipated a decrease there. But we're pretty pleased with our students with the increased percentages in the other We also were requested to share some of the Helene-related funding that we've received. So through the disaster recovery bills, we did get some recovery to help pay our school nutrition staff workers when schools were closed, and that was a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We also got about ninety thousand dollars to pay for mental health support. We did not need any technology or the second phase of school nutrition lost revenue. And the second, or the third phase of revenue, we did not get any funding from that. And then the final revenue provided us with about three hundred and ten thousand dollars to provide summer school programming in grades four through eight. Just as Dr. Jackson did, want to highlight some changes or some, some of our budget numbers from last year. You can see our total budget last year was eighty-eight million dollars, around that. And one of the big improvements, thanks to Ms. Kearns, our CFO, was to update and implement a new hourly pay table to really provide clarity and consistent increase in salary as our hourly workers move up the pay grades and really was allowing us to highlight and specialize salaries for our very specialized workers like plumbers and electricians to make sure that we're competing with the, with the, with the regional market. We did have major reductions in our, in our budget for FY twenty-five. The biggest came from consolidation of our two middle schools into one and an implementation of our staffing allotment formula, which did result in a decrease of eleven FTE positions across the board in our school district. And then we also did a ten percent budget cut to all non-personnel budgets across the board in our school system to kind of give you a review of where we were last year for our budget. Again, we always use the community school impact funds. And you can see this child is very happy that he has a lovely playground and really good mulch to roll around in as they're out there playing on our amazing playgrounds. So Rob did make mention of this, the state senate budget, kind of the information that we know upcoming in the senate budget. Again, we haven't seen the house budget, but anticipate it'll be somewhere within this realm as we were planning our increases in cost and where we potentially would need to make cuts. So we are seeing increase in salary for teachers, assistant principals, healthcare staff, principals, and other office staff, you know, anywhere of a range between one point two five or three point three across the two years. That budget did also propose cuts to central office funding by five percent and a reduction in dollars that will cover AP testing across the board. Just to also look at some of these other impacts that the budget will have for us is increasing the cost of our contribution to retirement as well as increasing the overall cost for our contribution to healthcare. So I always try to make this really simple for everyone. When I think about budgeting and creating a balanced budget is you've got revenue loss, you've got increased expenses. And as we looked at our revenue loss, we had allocated three million dollars in fund balance for this year, and then we had to up that to four million after the reduction in the allocation from the county. So we know if we don't cut those expenses, that will then have to be considered as reoccurring costs. So we have to put that in our revenue loss bucket. Do anticipate a small decrease in our student, student funding from the state and then the charter payments that we send out to our students that attend charter schools. And very excited to join Buncombe County in offering free lunch and breakfast to every student next year. But we do know that that is going to cost us about half a million dollars to get that program up and going while we are trying to increase our participation rate. When we look at our increased expenditures for next year, our local supplement will cost us somewhere, it's a little bit lower than that two hundred and eight thousand. But as we look at increased steps and moving teachers up the salary schedule, we anticipate an increase of about two hundred thousand dollars in paying our local supplement, an increase in salary by one point three million. And again, those kind of costs that we know everyone is having to, to bear, the increased insurance costs and healthcare and utility as well as property insurance. So as we looked at our ins and outs and trying to figure out what is the number we need in increased revenue or to decrease expenditures to balance our budget, that total came out to six point nine one million dollars. I want to talk a little bit about why we have these revenue shortfalls. The slide kind of glosses over it with the increased expenditures and decreased revenue. But some of the things that are unique to Asheville City Schools is our pre-K program. We operate a pre-K program at five campuses, and we are not able to operate that at a cost neutral level. So we spend locally about point eight million dollars to run our pre-K programming. Our school nutrition expenses, as I mentioned, moving to CPE as we work on increasing participation rates, that's going to cost us, we anticipate a half a million dollars, similar to Buncombe County. Our percent of students that are qualified for exceptional children program is fifteen point seven, fifteen point seven percent. And that costs us locally about two million dollars to provide the services that are required in those students' individualized educational plans. Talked a little bit about unpredictable and variable revenue shortfalls, but what I wanted to help the board, the commissioners see is the unintended, the unfunded salary fringe and benefits over time. So what I did in this graph is I took an employee that is, have twelve years of experience, looked at their salary, added our local supplement, and said, based on the retirement rate contribution and healthcare costs, so you can see that increase in cost over time. So in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, a staff member in Asheville City Schools, a teacher with twelve years of experience, we would have contributed about twelve thousand dollars for their healthcare. Compared to twenty-five, twenty-six, we're going to contribute about fourteen thousand five hundred. Oh, yes, sorry, that's retirement. Thank you, Heidi. And then the bottom one, the red, is our cost for healthcare per employee, and you can see that cost increase going up over time. And we already know that for twenty-six, twenty-seven, that cost is going to go from eighty-five hundred to about eighty-nine hundred. So we're seeing that increase continue to, to process. The other thing I really want to touch on is state allotments. So we know that the state provides us allotments, and then whatever we don't get from the state, we've got to fund locally. So state allotments come in many different forms, either a position per student, it could come in months of employment, or it could come in dollar amounts. So we got our allotments, our preliminary allotments, April fourth. But there's still several bills out there, I think has already been mentioned, that could impact state allotment formulas, so we're keeping on our eye on those. So this is really just our best estimate as we were looking at those ups and downs arrows. I do want to highlight, while allotment formulas help create some equitable staffing across the board, there are some innate problems with staffing allotments. They really oversimplify the complexity of public education and what it means to educate a student. We have thirty-eight hundred students, and those thirty-eight hundred students need thirty-eight hundred different ways to learn. And that means we've got to differentiate, we've got to meet the needs of those learners, and that isn't captured in a staffing allotment formula. And I just believe that staffing allotment formulas start from this scarcity mindset where you're like, hey, if we don't have this, we can't, we do it, so we have to set this bar. And it really depersonalizes education away from what students need and the skills and talents of our staff. And the other just obvious piece is we don't have a point-three teacher. There's no point-three teacher as we look at our staffing allotments. You know, one school could earn two point-three teachers. Well, I don't have a point-three teacher, so I've got to either round that down to two teachers and increase class sizes, or round it up to three teachers. So I wanted to highlight five key areas, just as to give the commissioners an example of why we have locally funded positions. First, I want to highlight elective teachers in grades, our middle school through high school. So I had created our own staffing allotment formula and allot one teacher at the high school and middle school for electives for every hundred and fifty students. The state gives us no allotments for music band PE. They give us nothing. And we believe in a well-rounded education for our students in Nashville City Schools, so I think that's an important allotment to make sure that we have. So we are funding locally fifteen elective teachers between our high school and our middle school. Music teachers, I also am a strong believer in supporting the arts. So for music teachers, for every hundred and seventy-five students enrolled in band, orchestra, or chorus, we allocate one teacher. The state, again, does no allotment for music programs. So we have seven music teachers across our high school and middle school. Again, that's seven additional teachers that are above, above the state allotment. Assistant principals is another area where I, having served as a principal, know the need of having strong instructional leadership teams. So they have a different formula per school level, and I, or no, they don't. Theirs is general. So they do one month of an assistant principal per ninety-eight point five-three students. That's a very interesting number to me, how they came up with that. I have no idea. But then I created an allotment formula that really supports providing that additional support for our principals at each school. So we go, our state, the state allotts us three point eight assistant principal positions based on the months of employment, and we have thirteen, so those are locally funding nine point twelve of our assistant principal staffing. Instructional assistants is another key way that we support student learning, and the state also has a very interesting way to calculate this. They look at the total number of students in kindergarten through third grade, and you may have to help me, Heidi, if I get this wrong. And they, then they take it and they divide that by twenty-one to determine the number of classes. And then, which our class sizes are sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, so they're using a higher number than we even are mandated by state to use to calculate the number of classes. And then they use their ratio to assign IAs for classrooms based on that number. I firmly believe that our kindergarten teachers must have an instructional assistant full-time in their classroom, so we allot one kindergarten IA for every kindergarten classroom. First and second grade, I would love to have more instructional assistants to support those levels. Those are really challenging times where we're teaching kids how to read, and we know if you don't teach kids how to read by the end of third grade, getting them caught up to reading later in life is just exponentially more difficult and more expensive. So we would love to have more, but trying to create an opportunity to start with one IA for every two classes in kindergarten or first and second grade, and then we split one IA in every three classes for third grade. Another area where we are locally funding a lot more positions than what the state allotts is our enhancement teachers in K five. That's our art, music, PE, and then our specialist teacher at each, our enhancement teacher that focuses on our magnet areas. So theater at Claxton, we have an environmental science one at Lucy Herring, a STEM at Hall Fletcher, and so on. So the state allot's one teacher for every hundred and ninety students. Some of our schools are right around that two hundred, so they would get one enhancement teacher. I just don't think that that's appropriate as we want to, well, make sure our students have that well-rounded education. So allotting one teacher for every eighty students earns us about four enhancement teachers per, per school, elementary school. So we have twenty-one enhancement teachers. The state only allot's us eight point three, so locally, we're funding about thirteen. So just in these five categories, we are locally funding fifty-eight positions. So you can imagine, as we look at every other employee category, where we do or don't get funding, that's what builds up this number of locally funded positions. Just an overall look at our personnel funding. So our staffing, we have six hundred, and this is a capture in time, this changes every day, which always drives me nuts, but it just does. So state funding pays for fifty-five point eight percent of our staff, two point four percent of our staff are paid through federal, which is about, leaves us forty-two staff, or forty-two percent of our staff are paid out of local funds. And just to note, that is a decrease from a year ago by eleven FTE positions. So as we implement the formula based on enrollment, we are going to keep making those adjustments. As made mention earlier, we do a study every two years via a group called Cooperative Strategies. I think they were just bought and now they're well-hurt. I've used this company for seven or eight years in Georgia, and they do a really great job creating a projection of enrollment. For this year, for us, they projected us four students off. So, I mean, they are really, really accurate when they tell you, here's what we think your enrollment numbers are going to be. And then they give you a projection, they give you four, they give you a recommended, a high, a low, and a moderate. And I have learned to stick with their recommended number, it's always going to work. So you can see, just over time, and like, has been shared before, and I've said this, decreasing student enrollment is not a Nashville City Schools problem, this is a nationwide issue. I can't tell you how many emails I get from companies and consultants saying, how do we help you, you know, close buildings, now, you know, analyze your facilities to match your decreasing enrollment? This is a national trend from decreased birth rates. Also wanted to highlight some information from the consolidation study to make sure that we did highlight this. And basically, that study came back and said, you know, consolidation of the two systems would not result in improving student achievement or any increased financial efficiencies. And both districts did not, did not find that there were excessive central office staffing in either district. All that to say, we know we've got work to do, we know we have areas of improvement, and we are dedicated in Nashville City Schools to working on that. The one area it did say that we needed to look at was how could we either assess our facility usage and/or shared services? So we have put out an RFP, which is closed. We have three firms we've selected that will come and present in June to the board. We will select one of those three firms to complete a long-range facility usage and analysis for us so that we can make a very well-informed decision on what do we need to do with our facilities, knowing with decreased enrollment, knowing age and upkeep of facilities to make the best decisions to be as good stewards with taxpayer money as we can. And the example, I'll say, let's, let's say the study says, yes, you need to go down to four elementaries. I don't know that it'll say that, but let's say it does. Well, then we have to look at which, how do we do that within our current facilities? And we love Claxton, it's a beautiful school, but it's also a hundred years old. So the maintenance cost for one building may outweigh the need for this really nice historical building. So we've got to take time to really look at what are the assets that we have, what is the value of the, the buildings, and what, where does it make the most sense to restructure and focus so that we can do the most with what we have? And then the project timeline is about five to six months, and added into this RFP is the opportunity for us to look at where could we share services between Nashville City Schools and Buncombe County? So that is part of what they'll, they'll be looking at and then working with Dr. Jackson and his team on identifying how that work is going to happen while we also do our own local facility study. Again, I'm going to address how we are addressing that decreased enrollment, and the first and foremost is our staffing allotment formula, is that is student enrollment-based, and we have to fluctuate year to year. So knowing that as we plan for decreased enrollment, we can follow cohorts of students that are much larger versus much smaller, so we know next year, we're going to need twenty-four fifth-grade teachers instead of twenty-two because that bubble of students is moving up into another grade level. So it really is a responsive formula that allows us to put the need, match where the needs are with the staffing. Again, we will continue to do the enrollment projection studies so that we have a good pulse on what those numbers look like projected forward, doing that facility usage study as well as a long-range facility, long-term facility usage study and finance. So one of the things we already have done, and we had this done last year, was look at our facility usage. That same firm that did our enrollment did this study for us, and they calculate the capacity of the building, that's how many students will fit in this building based on the number of rooms, the spaces, and how big those rooms are. And then they come up with utilization. So based on your enrollment, divide that by capacity, and that will give you utilization. So our space utilization was somewhere between forty and seventy-five percent across the district, knowing that two of our lowest were Asheville Middle School and Monfort. But now that we've consolidated, we've increased the usage percentage at Asheville Middle School from forty-five to fifty-six. So I think that was a positive use of resources to move our district forward. We also do help highlight that there is a recommended usage rate. You don't, at middle, elementary, you can get up to a hundred percent of facility usage, but high school and middle school, they, you really shouldn't go above ninety percent of facility usage, just based on how scheduling and students move throughout those buildings. I do want to highlight as well charter enrollment. So I, all of our students in Buncombe County are funded by the county commissioners, charter school students as well. So we want to make sure that as we talk through this, we're also understanding that even though we have thirty-eight hundred students in Nashville City Schools, five hundred and ninety of them are students that are Nashville City School students going to a charter school. So that funding is coming through us and goes out to the charter schools. So just want to make sure that as the commissioners think about the funding, you do, you do kind of remember that this is funding for every public school student, including those charter Again, just a quick review of revenue loss, expenditure increases that are estimates, and how we are going to look at what we're asking for to try to make up that six point nine one million dollars. So the request from Asheville City Schools Board of Education is that the commissioners restore the supplemental tax to point two, or, sorry, point one-two, which we anticipate will increase our revenue by one point five million dollars. We are requesting a local appropriation increase for Asheville City Schools by two point four one million dollars, and we do anticipate and have budgeted three million dollars from our fund balance to help balance that budget. Couple notes before we take questions is, as you've seen, we have impact from Hurricane Helene. We see it most directly in our younger students, and we know that we need to invest in what we're doing to keep making that progress. I want to, again, bring back next year, when I share our achievement data, that we're continuing to see growth and we're continuing to close the achievement gap. And we know we need the staff that we've already invested in professional learning and training. They're doing great work. Taking away staff at this point is not going to allow us to see the growth that we know we can see and that we have seen. We've got those increases expenditures that are really out of our control, and then we have just some really significant work on the ground, moving us forward to really catalyze and capture how we're closing the achievement gap for our students and setting a new standard in Nashville City School for excellence. We are rewriting our grading and promotion procedures so that we can systematically understand when students start falling behind that trajectory and provide systematic updates for, interventions for our students before school, after school, Saturday school, so that they can cross that stage. And we know every single student that we shake hands with on graduation day has achieved an excellent education, and we want to make sure we're able to do that. And that's what the work is behind grading and promotion. We're also deep into our strategic planning process, hoping to wrap that up here in a couple of months, but that is going to set a new direction for Asheville City Schools on where we're going, how we're teaching, and taking that opportunity of the excitement and energy from the Bridge Learning Program to reimagine what our schools look like. How do we create a new type of educational opportunity for students that isn't limited to the eight-thirty to two-thirty school hours? How do we break down the four walls in the classroom and create learning experiences outside of those classrooms so that our students are learning through internships, hands-on learning experiences, and being and working as a part of their community? And I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Furman. Questions?
First of all, thank you for the, your work on the facility study, as well as looking at areas for shared services. So I'm definitely interested as that comes back. Thank you for being proactive with that. And then the Bridge to Learning Program, sounds very exciting and interesting, so I'll follow up with you more on that. Can you go back to the slide with the expenses and revenue? That one, please? Thank you.
Oh, went too far. There we go.
So my question, I've got two, around the school nutrition and the fund balance. Those are the two I'm trying to kind of figure out. With the school nutrition, so I didn't know, like with Buncombe County Schools, like with that free program, I don't remember us specifically funding that. I think that was funded at a different level from my understanding. So I'm kind of unclear why you're saying you'd need five hundred thousand from us for that program.
Well, it's not necessarily from the county, it's just saying we know that the revenue won't meet the expenditures on that program moving to providing free lunch for every student. We have to increase our participation rate to get a higher rate of reimbursement. And as we work on increasing our participation rate, that reimbursement level will increase, which will close that gap. But unless you have a certain level of students getting, like, taking a lunch, taking a breakfast, your reimbursement rate for providing that free lunch is lower than when you get it up to a certain rate. So we're just projecting that we know we're going to have to pay for part of that, we're going to have to contribute somehow to provide free lunches for every student. And I'll let Heidi to maybe have some better way to explain that.
Well, currently, obviously, Buncombe County Schools has participated in that program for some time, and Asheville City has been asked multiple times, why don't you participate? Well, part of that formula that makes the CEP program effective is, is a poverty index. So you had to have qualified for free and reduced lunch before, and we have a fairly low number of students that qualify. So that threshold was right there. I mean, if we, we were either just over it or just under it every year. And so the entry qualifications to get in the program have now been reduced. So we can enter the program, but we cannot do so at a break-even position because our qualifying students is a much lower number than, say, Buncombe County Schools students are. So you can compensate for that by increasing participation. As long as you can get that participation rate up, then you bring in more money to the program by more students finally becoming participants and eating in the cafeterias. So it's going to take some time to get to that point, and that's just a rough estimate right now of what it would cost us locally in order to fully implement that program and get our participation rates up moving forward.
So thanks for that clarification. And then on the fund balance, that part, can you go in?
Yeah, I don't understand it either.
Yeah, go into that more. It's just kind of, that's, that's fuzzy to me there.
Well, that's just, as Dr. Furman said, is she tries to simplify this presentation to help more of the public understand where we are. So right now, our current year, two, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're estimating that we will use four million dollars to fund, to balance our budget. So that's our starting place. So in order to present this no-cuts budget to you today, if we were to break even and try not to reduce services at any level, we have to make up, similar to the slide Dr. Jackson presented, we have to make up what we lost this year in order to then address the increased costs for next year, because we're only projecting to be able to infuse three million dollars of fund balance for next year. So in order to break even, obviously, fund balance is a non-recurring revenue source, not a recurring revenue source. So in order to provide that same level of services, we need to find four million dollars from somewhere. So obviously, it's not probably at our local level with the difficulties that are being faced right now. It's not at the state level, as we told you, because we're actually having a revenue loss. Federal funding is about at break-even, so we're basically working out of a hole on the federal level just because of salary and fringe benefit increases. So if we want to look at keeping all staff and all services intact for next year, we are at a four-million-dollar deficit to start our current, our, our next year's budget process.
With the four million on the slide is, is, you're saying will be allocated to the FY twenty-five budget or the FY twenty-six budget?
So that is what we're spending out of fund balance for the FY twenty-five budget. So if we don't have So, if we don't have revenue to replace that, we have to find that much money plus the new cost for next year.
The follow-up question. Okay, so, you're spending four million out of fund balance for this current budget year.
Correct.
You're expecting to spend three million out of fund bed, budget, fund balance for this next budget year.
If the revenue sources come through that have been projected on the slides, yes ma'am.
And then where would that put you at fund balance then? Where would that leave you?
Well, that's a fine question, just like, um, Buncombe County Schools had to answer. We don't know that right now because there are a lot of uncertainties between the sales tax projections, the property tax projections. Some of the school allotments are not complete yet, and obviously, we have a, a large percentage of our employees that are hourly. Um, so, right now, um, we only ever know what fund balance is as of June thirtieth every year, once everything is processed. But our estimate would be that we will have about half of the fund balance we had at the end of June thirty-twenty-four, once we end June thirty-twenty-six.
Okay, so let me, so, what would the, okay, so what's the expected? So, what would that have be then?
It would be approximately seven million dollars.
And that would be?
Percent, what percent?
Um, I didn't run the percent on that.
So, the one thing I want to make sure I clearly understand when we talk about the percent of fund balance for the, for Asheville, do you calculate your percent fund balance on your total budget, which is your federal and your state versus just your local piece?
Right, and that is because of something else that Buncombe brought up today is we never know when we're going to get our federal money. We never know when we're going to get our state money. So, we do target that fund balance in, for cash flow purposes on the entire budget, yes ma'am.
Okay, so your expected fund balance at the, your best guess, I get it. Expected fund balance at the end of FY twenty-six would be seven million. So, what are you expecting it to be at the end of this current fiscal year in June?
It would be somewhere six to eight million, we, we hope, so.
So, can you do that math?
Excuse me, ten, ten, I'm sorry.
Okay.
At this year. We have too many fiscal years to talk about all at one time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm not, I'm not going to embarrass myself by trying to do math in public, but I just, I, I'm finding it a little challenging to compare your budget with BCS with how we're calculating. So, it might be beneficial for us to, now that we have all the numbers, compare them side by side and have a little bit of perspective about what fund balance looks like for each entity. Is that something we could do, Avril? Does that add more to your plate in this time? Because I, I just want to be able to understand where we're at so we can share with people the three different ways we're looking at this because they're, they're not saying, "This is completely valid," and I appreciate where you're coming from, and I, I get why you're calculating it that way. But it, it doesn't necessarily comport with how I'm reading BCS or our budget's fund balance projections to be.
Um, we can ask that question to BCS because they didn't give us fund balance data at this point in time. The, the only question I had for, you didn't tell us what your request is. You said what your shortfall is, but you didn't get to what your request is. Almost I missed it. Did I miss it?
Two-point-four.
Okay, thanks. So, you're asking for a three-million-dollar?
Two-point.
Two-point-four.
It's the two together.
Two together, right.
One and a half plus the two-point-four-one.
The three-point-nine.
Three-point-nine, right. So, our use of three million dollars in fund balance next year is an estimate if we receive the three-point-nine. And if we don't, then that would be another analysis as to whether we cut more or infuse more fund balance.
You mentioned that this is a no-cuts budget, yet you talked about your enrollment going down and some of the other challenges you have. Can you tell what, why a no-cut, so what your, do you have ideas?
Yeah, um, like I said, trying to provide the necessary supports for Helene recovery. So, we know we're moving forward in a good direction. We're seeing that learning impact in our, particularly our K-five levels. Um, so, just my take on it right now is if we can keep all of our staff to really plug in and do that support, to do extra small group reading instruction, to do more math instruction, we know our students need attention in small groups and that differentiated instruction, and keeping all the current staff that we have will allow us to do that.
Going back to that arrow slide, um, a couple of questions. I think I saw a previous iteration of this slide from, I think it was April seventh. The ADM, uh, I guess the loss of ADM decreased across the month. Is that, is that because enrollment numbers have improved? And is that current, kind of, current academic year enrollment numbers that have improved? Or what, what ADM?
They fund us in arrears.
Okay.
You want to talk about that?
I, I didn't know which slide or you.
So, the pre, where we initially anticipated a loss of about a half a million dollars, um, from ADM, from the state, but it only came out to like four-hundred.
Four-thirty-seven, four-hundred?
Yep.
Right, we're last, we're funded in arrears now, that's true. The state changed that funding formula. So, last year, we were funded thirty-nine hundred students, and this year, it's thirty-eight-twenty-four. So, we only had us, we had a much, the, the loss of students slowed considerably for this current year's budget.
Yep.
Okay. How many ki- sorry, I think you just told me, but how many kids does that represent?
Six, what was that, seventy-six students?
Okay, I meant to ask that of Dr. Jackson, too. Okay. And then on the increased expenses, look like BCS saw a hundred-and-seventy-eight percent increase in insurance, which is insane.
And our insurance rates are the same.
Yeah, and so, I guess I'm trying to compare apples to apples here.
Information yet. I'm a little worried.
The, um, is, is some of this, you know, some of this just happen, you know, it's inflation, it's, it's utility costs, insurance is going up. Um, but is any of it random, like sal- salary related to the quantity of years of service or retirement, just related to the age of persons? Is, is any of it?
It's all based on, like, staff moving up.
Right.
So, as the state has allotted an increase of three percent, we are estimating about that range. So, it is just really waiting to see what the exact number is. So, right now, it's just estimating. Based on current salaries, increasing those current salaries by, let's say, three percent, it's going to cost us X additional dollars.
Okay. Part of why I ask is it seem, if I'm doing the math right, and this might not be apples to apples, but it seems like BCS's, uh, listed cost increases compared to yours is fifty percent-ish higher. But the size of the s- school systems is not directly proportionate. It, uh, I think BCS is five times the size of ACS, something like that. So, that, that, that's just a question is proportionally, why is your, your increased cost is so much higher? I don't know if that's something you can answer off the top of your head, but.
I, you all can formalize that question. I'm sure Tina and I would both be happy to get back with you on that.
Okay.
Can you repeat that question?
Yeah, it, I'm looking at this slide from BCS, which has their increased insurance, their, their utilities, um, staff increases, retirement, and it seems to line up with your same categories of increased expenses. However, yours is one-point-nine-two million versus their, uh, roughly six, uh, million dollars.
So, proportionately, you're asking the question?
Yeah, proportionally, why? They don't seem to be proportionate in terms of the size of the two systems.
Part, part of that would be our proportion of locally funded staff is much different than Buncombe's is.
Ah, okay.
And then them being that much larger than we are, they also get a lot more guaranteed position allotments than we do, which absorb the full cost of a staff member, where a lot of ours come out of dollar allotments, and those raises and fringe benefit increases are not necessarily covered a hundred percent. So, we have to factor all that in together. I'm sure that's a significant part of that, but like I say, if you'd like us to get some more details, we'd be happy to do that.
I think that his, is asking for more details. So, if you can take that back and return as a thank you.
Are there any additional questions? All right, thank you both, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I believe John has a few additional slides for us to get through before we get out of here. And I just want to know we are running a little, a little behind on our time schedule.
I can do it.
All right, let's go.
This brings us back to the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Since our last meeting, we have reviewed revenues, expenditures. We are increasing our budget collection rate to ninety-nine percent. This will add around six-hundred-thousand dollars of revenue. Other revenue sources we reviewed, examined have resulted in about one-point-seven million dollars of additional revenue. So, these, these total changes are two-point-four million dollars. We brought the list of discretionary community investments to you last time. We agreed to, on pauses and cuts to programs, to reduce expenditures by four-point-six million dollars. We do have additional debt service from vehicle purchases for the last two years that adds one-point-three million dollars of expense to the debt budget. We were able to make a temporary salary reduction of around a hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars. This reduces the expenditure budget by three-point-three million dollars. To quickly go through our discretionary community investments, last time, we decided to pause affordable housing services program funding, strategic partnership grants, tipping point grants, community recreation grants, the reparations contribution. Decision was also made to reduce the conservation easement funding by five-hundred thousand dollars. HHS has recommended reducing their supplemental HCCBG funding by a hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars as they are unable to make use of the full amount of in-home aid funding. Um, you heard of, from Buncombe County Schools on the Career Academy, and you heard a bit about the School Community Impact Funds. I can tell you that the Kala program, which goes through the city of Asheville, took thirty-five low-income and minority high school students from seven different high schools in both school systems and placed them at thirty different internships across the county last year. All twenty-two seniors of the program were accepted into a two- or four-year college program and all received some type of scholarship. So, that is the report out I have on the Kala program. So, this leaves five-point-seven million dollars in discretionary community investments. Are there any other thoughts on this list? This brings us to a total expenditure budget of four-hundred-thirty-four-point-seven million dollars. This is a two-point-one percent reduction from the fiscal year twenty-five amended budget.
Say that again, John, please. It was how much reduction?
A two-point-one percent reduction from the fiscal year twenty-five amended budget. This is where our second pass budget now sits. Since our last work session, we have decreased the gap of expenditures over revenues from twenty-two-point-five to sixteen-point-eight million dollars. We've discussed with use of fund balance of fiscal year twenty-two-four and projected use this year, that there is not available fund balance for use, and revenues will need to balance expenditures. The value of a penny is approximately five-point-two-four million dollars. With no additional changes in revenue or expenditures, this would result in, in a property tax increase of three-point-two-one cents per a hundred dollars of assessed value. This would increase the current tax rate from five-one-point-seven-six cents to five-four-point-nine-seven cents, if this is the route we choose to take. That increase would result in about a hundred-twelve dollars to an annual property tax on a residential property valued at three-hundred-fifty thousand dollars.
And John just said we're, we're cleared. Uh, none of the information on this slide includes, uh, any of the requests from either the fire districts or the school districts?
The fire districts would be separate tax increases for the individuals in those districts.
Right, of course, of course, yeah, of course.
And you're correct, Commissioner, this does not include. This includes the one-twenty-one-five that has been our placeholder so far. So, you would need to add, forget your input on where you want to land for schools, to change that one-twenty-one. So, John, if you'll go back to one slide. So, this is the makeup of that four-thirty-four-point-seven.
Has anybody done the math on what, how many cents tax increase it would take to disfund all of the schools' requests total?
So, for local current expense, we have to fund through, at the ADM split, which is about eighty-four to sixteen right now. So, if you, if you fund a two-point-four-one increase for Asheville City Schools, that becomes about a twelve-point-seven million-dollar increase.
So, I'm going to speed it up just a little. So, twelve million dollars is what would take to fund them all? So, what is, how many pennies is twelve million dollars at five-point-two-four cents? That's just over two pennies, so closer to three pennies to do that. No, I'm sorry, two and a half pennies.
Yes.
On top of the three-point-two-one on the second.
It'd be three-point-two-one plus two and a half pennies, yes.
And then there's also the separate ACS, Asheville ACS request.
Yes, that would be a separate.
Similar to the fire districts.
Yeah.
You'll see a recommend tax increase in the recommend budget next week, but we would pass any tax increase to the Asheville City Schools taxing district with the annual budget ordinance at adoption.
That makes sense. I, I, I'm just, I think it's important for us to think through, if, you know, the municipalities may increase, we've got fire districts may have an increase, ACS may increase, county increase. I'm thinking about the individual homeowner. I'm thinking about the cumulative impacts of that. So, we should, we should be cognizant of that as we think through these things.
I'll add one more to that equation. That includes the city of Asheville has not made any decisions themselves. So, that would be another thing we just have to consider in our greater scheme here.
And other municipalities, I think as Commissioner Ball mentioned, are also considering increases.
I'd like to go back to slide thirty, page thirty. So, at the meeting on four-twenty-two, oh, sorry, the aging funds. Um, was it five-hundred thousand? I'm wondering, when did it get cut down to three-hundred and seventy-five?
So, this is, this is HHS's recommendation because they can't make use of all of the funds for in-home aid, aid.
Okay.
And I think you, I think you put a sl- paper in here for us with that breakdown?
Yes.
Didn't you, okay.
Yes, there, there, there's a specific handout to the supplemental aging funding. It explains what, what they've done this year.
Right now?
It is, it's their recommendation, it is in this budget. Um, but they can't make use of that funding. They can't process, they can't process that mu- those many applications for in-home aid fund.
I haven't been able to sit down with them yet, but I'd be interested. I mean, they came to multiple meetings for a month straight, begging that that five-hundred thousand was not touched because they would have to possibly, from what I understood, close down a day program for.
So, they expect, they expect only to spend total of the five-hundred thousand this year, only three-hundred-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, I'll reach out.
One, one question, just looking at the, the revenue. Have we looked at the, the OPD?
OPED?
Yes, okay.
All, of post-employment benefits?
Yes.
We have, and you raised that one question with me. And we did go back and look at that, and I told you at the time that we didn't fund it last year, and we need to take a look at our actuarial funding for that. We are currently funded at only about forty-seven percent. Um, so, we would want to, I'm looking at Melissa as well because I had her to do some research. So, we strongly recommend from finance perspective and from my perspective, and we would strongly recommend that we do fund that this year, since we have missed it in the prior year.
I think to quote my CFO, she said that, uh, that isn't a liability, and unfunded liabilities are things that will impact the credit rating.
So, I understand that. And we're looking at getting, like, revenue replacement funding? So, I guess, I know that there's, until we get it, we don't have it. But I'm just asking this question. With that one, right, there's like the equalization, there's possibly two million there, there's revenue replacement. Are we looking at the potential then, where we could do the OPED at two, and then when that comes in, put it back in there? How are y'all looking at the potential of that?
Sorry, can you repeat the OPED, what?
OPED is other post-employment benefits. And by law, we do have to set aside funds for all the benefits for people that retire
I gotcha.
that we have to pay for. And, um, in the past, we've tried to, we funded at a level of two million dollars a year just to catch up with what that liability is. And last year, we did not do that. And a couple of times in the past, we have not done that. That has been the one that we have said, "Let's not do for, for lack of funds in the current year or so." Um, but. But, to your point, to your point, Commissioner, I didn't, Parker asked if he could add revenue replacement. That bill has not moved, it is still sitting in Rules Commission. I've asked, um, Tim to reach out to Vinnie and others to track that down, so we can answer your question today, and it has not moved. So we do not know yet what's going to happen, we fully anticipate that something would come, but we don't know when that's going to happen. As far as the equalization, that too has not moved, it got pulled from the Article thirty-nine bill that we were talking about, and it got moved to the re- the bigger property tax bill, and that too has not moved. So we don't have any answers yet as we sit here today, what a revenue replacement will look like or equalization. So we have not made any, any concessions in our budget to cover those because they're, they're so unknown at this time.
What about the, um, the federal CBL or the state loan, the Treasurers Office Loan Program?
The federal office.
So the state cash flow loan, we are u- we are using that as cash flow and that's, that will help us n- not have to assign an additional eight and a half million dollars of fund balance to.
Okay, so it's built into?
It, it is, it, it's built, it's not here in the general fund, but it is built into the Helene, the Helene Fund so that we do not have to use additional fund balance in the amount of eight point four million dollars.
And as far as the federal CDL loan is concerned, we, we have requested and requesting that paperwork so we can follow that and get applied for that as well. That is a cap of five million dollars and Finance Office is working. Finance, you want to say something? She's motioning at me, so.
Hi, I just wanted to clarify, as we look at funding sources that will help to address Helene disaster cost, that is not going to close the operational funding gap. It will help to replenish cash that we have spent that is on a grant fund, but that does not help close and fund the gap that we're looking at here. For the last funding source that you were requiring about the CDL program, um, we are pursuing that, going into it knowing it is highly likely we do not meet the existing qualifications. The benefit for us to continue to pursue it is to be able to continue to advocate for a supplemental disaster bill at your federal level, to make changes to where we would be able to take advantage of that funding and to demonstrate need.
Because our, our, the hit to our budget proportionate to our size is not, doesn't meet the threshold, was that?
It's the, the revenue loss that's required to be eligible for that program, it, it, it does not look like that we will meet that threshold.
Right, okay.
The state loan program, um, there was strong indication in the first round, even in the wording of their documents, that this is the first round in insinuating there would be more, and following rounds of funding. Where we haven't seen any movement on that, and we continue to advocate for another round of funding, it would be, um, based on the same type of allocation. Again, that's going to replace cash that we've spent out of a grant fund, it will not be, it will not impact your general fund.
And then a question on the debt service, why did the debt service on vehicles just jump so much?
That had not been factored in, we just received our documents from, from our financial advisor and they, they brought that, that was brought, the information was brought to us last week.
Are there other questions?
We may not be able to answer this now, but I, I'd also be curious if the potential HUD, uh, funds that the state now has approved is going to be able to offset any of this? Or if that's going to be additional projects that will come later?
It wouldn't be operational funds, it would be specific Helene recovery projects.
Thinking, thank you.
All right, y'all, we're way over time, here's, here's where I think we're landing today. Based on slide thirty, there have been no additional movements to make any reductions to the discretionary community investments. So with that said, as Manager Pender moves to present her budget, her version of the budget to us on Tuesday evening, right now, we are currently standing at a property tax increase of three point two one cents. And that is without increasing anything to our K-twelve school districts. If we do that, that's another approximate two and a half cents, um, so I think, yes, Avril?
We don't have any movement yet either on Article thirty-nine.
Correct.
When it will go to the House, so that's another thing to, to Commissioner Wells's point, you have all these unknowns.
That's right.
That is not factored in to this budget.
I was going to say.
Yes, but what I would like guidance on would be at what level would you want us to add for the schools in this budget?
That's where I was headed. Sorry, she beat me to it. So, please provide guidance to Manager Pender on where you would like to head, um, with the schools. I appreciate the great conversation and the questions around revenue replacement, there are so many unknowns, you all. I think we have to work with what is ahead of us, what is presented to us, and not the unknowns of what could or could not come in. That's just, that's, that's where I'm, my starting point for this is not guaranteeing that we're going to see any of that cash flow and equalization. Who knows if and when we'll see it, so I think this is the best guess.
Could you get those numbers again, please?
Um, yes, so on page, on slide thirty-two, um, right now we are looking at, just as presented, with no additional reductions, three point two one. If the guidance is given to Manager Pender to fund the schools at the request given today, it's approximately another two point five cents to the three point two one. So, let's just round and say six cents total. Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Horton.
Can I make one additional request? So we got all of the documents and I know our staff worked hard and I want to say thank you for that. But I like to review things and I like to be prepared and I have less than twenty-four hours to prepare for this meeting today. Is there any way that we can ensure that I, that we have sufficient time as commissioners to really look at this? I mean, look at the information that's presented to us.
We try to make sure you have it in plenty of time, but as you know, we met last week and we, we turned it around as quickly as we could to make sure you had it out yesterday.
Well, possibly, if, I mean, if we needed to push the, the meeting back a few days, I think it's very important that we come prepared because there's certain things that I just noticed that I really want to research before I ask questions about. And I want to be prepared for the meetings, I think that that's important, that's going to enable me to serve our constituents well.
We also didn't get our schools reports, um, until today.
As Dr. Jackson, they met last night.
That, because they met last night, so that did make this harder. We're also bound by statute that the manager has to present her budget to us on the first Tuesday in May.
The first, we can move the first meeting.
The first meeting in May, excuse me, our first meeting happens to be the first Tuesday, so. So it is a condensed time period for us because we are working around that state statute too.
Okay.
We do have, we do have four weeks between recommend budget and adoption.
It's still time.
Okay, perfect, I, I guess whenever we get to that point, just not receiving stuff twenty-four hours, less than twenty-four hours, it was two thirty-something yesterday, then when we have to have a meeting.
And you, you probably will not receive my recommended budget before the meeting because we're going to work on that this weekend after a meeting today, we'll work on it and get it out. But you don't, that's the recommended budget, you then have, to John's point, two, four weeks between getting that to have a rec, to have a true adopted budget, which is the board's budget. The public hearing will be on the, you have it two weeks before the public hearing, and then two weeks after the public hearing to, for the, for the adopted budget. The adopted budget is the board's, the budget, and that's when you make your final changes. So after you get the recommended budget that I would go through on Tuesday night, then all the changes that you choose to make to that budget, you have the time to do so. And to do the research to make those changes.
I, I respectfully hear everything that you're saying, but I still feel like less than twenty-four hours is not enough time to give somebody something to review.
Noted, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Horton, and I, I do want to commend the staff for getting the information compiled with a very short turnaround time and to our schools who just met last night for turning that information around and being with us at eleven AM this morning. I know some of our superintendents have been traveling as well for various meetings, so thank you all. And thank you to our school board members, our school supporters, our staff who have hung in, um, with us this afternoon. We appreciate y'all very much, um, for being with us and I hope everyone has a great weekend, we're adjourned.